Good morning, this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, August but we meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings, we're being viewed on Channel 35, the city's cable television station, and are also available by council phone.
Before beginning the irregular agenda, there is an item requested to be continued, item number three, request to continue for two weeks to August 16th.
Is there any objection to continuing item three, in that case, it's continued to August Members of the council, I do want to make one announcement before we get much further into the agenda, just on the off chance that anyone's listening here, we have a number of commission appointments, commission nominations, that are on the agenda for today, some of these were continued from last week, and I understand that most of them were on the agenda yesterday, and before I arrived here from building and safety, that you decided to continue them to today, because you had asked to continue them to today, my office asked the mayor to notify the commissioners to be here this morning, I learned just before the meeting started today, although I understand some of you had already been told, that Mr. Ferraro's office requested that the mayor's office tell the commissioners not to be present today, so none of the nominees, as far as I know, will be here this morning, that's going to leave the council with several options, we can continue the items again, we can consider the items and confirm, we can consider the items and deny confirmation, we can take no action at all, if we take no action, three of the multitude of commission nominations will be automatically confirmed on Friday, if the commission takes no action by Friday, two of them are reappointments, Mr. Steinberg to the Human Relations Commission, Mr. Houston, that's item 22 and 23, and item 43, Mr. Mulkeen's reappointment to, I believe, Civil Service Commission, the others have deadlines of the 8th, 9th, 11th, and 18th, so as we get to each item, I'm going to ask the council what you want to do with that particular item, you had indicated last week that you wanted to be able to have some direct discussions with the commission appointees, and of course, now, none of them is here, so as we get to each one, let's take each one separately, and I'll entertain a motion from the council, and we'll decide what to do with each of those items, I know that some of us do know a number of the nominees, and some of us have never met them, so we'll just take them up when we get there.
The first one, Madam President, item number four, is the confirmation of Samuel Lopez Jr. to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners.
All right, this one is a reappointment, council members.
Madam President.
I hear a motion for approval. much further into the agenda, just on the off chance that anyone's listening here. We have a number of commission appointments, commission nominations, that are on the agenda for today, some of these were continued from last week, and I understand that most of them were on the agenda yesterday, and before I arrived here from Building and Safety that you decided to continue them to today. Because you had asked to continue them to today, my office asked the mayor to notify the commissioners to be here this morning, I learned just before the meeting started today, although I understand some of you had already been told, that Mr. Ferraro's office requested that the mayor's office tell the commissioners not to be present today. So none of the nominees, as far as I know, will be here this morning. That's going to leave the council with several options. We can continue the items again, we can consider the items and confirm, we can consider the items and deny confirmation, we can take no action at all, if we take no action, three of the multitude of commission nominations will be automatically confirmed on Friday if the commission takes no action by Friday. Two of them are reappointments, Mr. Steinberg to the Human Relations Commission, Mr. Houston, that's item 22 and 23, and item 43, Mr. Mulkeen's reappointment to, I believe, Civil Service Commission. The others have deadlines of the 8th, 9th, 11th, and 18th. So I, as we get to each item, I'm going to ask the council what you want to do with that particular item, you had indicated last week that you wanted to be able to have some direct discussions with the commission appointees, and of course, now none of them is here. So let's, as we get to each one, let's take each one separately, and I'll entertain a motion from the council, and we'll decide what to do with each of those items. I know that some of us do know a number of the nominees, and some of us have never met them, so we'll, we'll just take them up when we get there. So-
The first one, Madam President, item number four, is the confirmation of Samuel Lopez Jr. to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners.
All right, this one is a reappointment, council members.
Madam President-
I hear a motion for approval.
No. Madam President-
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Was there a motion that was introduced last week and adopted yesterday?
You, the item, there was a motion-
Pertain to the commission?
Yes, there was, and I don't know what you did with it yesterday, it was while I was still at the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners.
It was, um, approved, Mr. Deaton-
Mr. Deaton, could we interrupt you? Go ahead.
The question relates to the motion introduced by Ms. Galanter last week, adopted yesterday, it was my understanding that the chief legislative analyst requested an opportunity to work on that issue that involves commissions and the appointments to those commissions, and perhaps, what period of time was requested to come back with a report pursuant to that motion, Mr. Deaton?
What, my understanding of the situation was that I was going to be requested to come back with that information next week, and that there was going to be a continuation of those commissioners that are up today until that report was concluded, and that report would be back one week from today. As a result, just so there's no-
One week from today, five, four commissioners will have been automatically reconfirmed, so we might as well take them up today.
That's fine, I'm just explaining, so there had been a discussion at the last time these commissioners were brought up, that, by the council, that they not be dragged down here, quote unquote, each time, waiting for another continuance until the council was ready. I had the feeling that the, that that was going to again happen today, and I'll take full responsibility for notification to the mayor's office that they probably shouldn't be asked to be returned, and I'll take full responsibility for anybody that didn't, that I didn't tell.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the-
Okay, I'm quite-
President Prof. Tem's office.
All right, um, but that's the situation, we had commissioners that have been down here once, at that point in time, those commissioners, as was mentioned yesterday, for those commissioners that were continued, that there was no need for them to show up next time if they, if they weren't, that the, the issue wasn't necessarily their, them personally. Excuse me, my word carefully.
Madam-
Okay, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
President, on the balance of my time-
Go ahead.
Pursuant to the motion that was adopted and the, the business that needs to be conduct and, conducted, I would think it appropriate, and would so move that the legislative analysts be afforded a week to come back with a report on that item.
And does your motion include anything with respect to the commissioners whose confirmation will be automatic before then?
Um, Madam President, your assistance in helping to accomplish the, the goal of our being able to act in concert to get a clear handle on the business of the commission appointments is what I would seek, and so if Friday is the date that we should move it to, or whatever specific date, so that we can accomplish the stated objective, is what I would appeal to you to help us do.
If I might, okay, so, I mean, the short answer to my question is no, your motion does not include anything with respect to-
My motion in part appeals to the chair to help us figure out how to get that done.
I understand that, but that's not the question I asked you, Mr. Deaton.
I might suggest that if you, on those that are, my understanding is that there are three that are, would approve by this Friday, you could consider those today, and if you wanted that commissioner, any one of those commissioners present when you did it, you can continue that to Friday, otherwise, just approve them today, there are-
There's also one-
There's one, 8/8, as I recall.
That's correct.
And that is next Tuesday?
That's right.
That's lucky, the, then you could either consider that today, and if, if not, and you wanted to talk to the commissioner, you could either call them in on Friday or on Tuesday.
Okay, well, we have several other council members who want to be heard first, Mr. Hernandez.
Then everything else will be coming on Wednesday.
Madam Chair, for a process that's trying to bring us into, I guess the word was, work in concert, we're not doing a very good job of that, and I'd like to recognize that I think it's a combination of our wishes as to be able to have some kind of policy statement as to the makeup of commissions, not necessarily who the individuals are on it, but make sure that there's a citywide representation and a reflection of the city geographically, as well as ethnically and gender-wise, so that there is a true reflection of the city of Los Angeles represented at the commission levels. However, I also wanted to point out that one of the processes I have a problem with is when we're asking citizens to be part of a commission and to serve as volunteers, how we treat them, and what kind of message we convey when we do that. And it's my clear understanding that we had commissioners who have been here, and we asked them to basically come up, and then we postponed their nomination, I would move at this time that it not be a requirement for those commissioners to show up again, so that we clearly send a message that it's not them as individuals that we're questioning, and that would be my motion, and that we do act today on those commissions that we will have nothing to say about, because the time will expire, and then continue the other commissions until there is that review of the policy that we adopted yesterday, and that would be my formal motion at this time.
Mr. Bernson.
Yes, let me just say this, the purpose of this drill that we're going through right now is to determine that abuse of power should not be a factor in replacement of commissioners. And let's, let's not get into the, all the ethnic stuff, and what the commissioners look like and all that, because that's not really the issue here, obviously, there should be a policy on that, but that's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about here is making sure that the process is done for the benefit of the city and getting the best possible people to serve, and not expel the, not expelling these people because they have a difference of opinion politically. So what I would suggest is, and I think I'm going to make a substitute motion, we have a number of these commissioners that are being renominated for posts they have currently held, I'm going to move on a substitute motion that we approve all of those who are up for reappointment to the position they've had, and with that, that would be my substitute motion, and it would, and I would incorporate all the other motions, such as the week for continuation, to give us a background of a program, and also, I think that covers Mr. Hernandez's motion as well, I might say that the others, I think we're going to continue, I know there's at least one that I intend to vote against for some reasons, which I'll explain at the time, but other than that, I think we should move forward, I don't think these people who have served and are willing to serve again should be punished because of the actions or what we perceive to be the actions of an individual. They have, they have served well, and if you don't think they've served well, then we should vote against them, but if we feel they have been, served well, then we should not dangle them from a hook anymore, a string, we ought to appoint, reappoint all of those, whether they are up, whether they, the time expires on them or not, and the others, we can examine one by one to make sure they meet the qualifications as new commissioners that we would hope to expect under the new charter, and I might tell you that I intend to author a charter amendment that will give the council certain authority in the future to prevent removal of commissioners for what may not be proper circumstances.
Mrs. Walters.
Mr. Bernson had indicated that he's going to introduce a ballot measure to prevent the kind of action that, unilateral action that we saw in the case of a commissioner that we had approved, and recently approved, and that's Mr. Ted Stein, and the mayor removed him because of a political difference, so I hope that will be made clear to the voters. I do not think that the reasons that council people have been asking questions of appointees has to do with which candidate they support in a particular election, but the mayor has removed quite a number, and I am concerned that we just not get into the business of these people not coming forward and being approved because the time has run on the nomination. I would suggest, Madam Chair, that the people who are not here today be notified and asked to be here on Friday, so that the council may have an opportunity to see them, these things come, we don't know even what some of the people look like who don't show up, we don't know if they have an affinity for the work they're being asked to do, and I recall that when the charter changes, the old charter was changed, and the council no longer had the authority to be involved in whether a commissioner should be removed or not, the argument for that was that, well, they come through the council for approval, and so it seems to me that if they come through before approval, our approval should represent something other than just a rubber stamp. Of the three commission appointees that are before us today, there's one of them who is a close friend of mine, whom I've known for years, and, and his family, but I don't think that should mean that he should not be here for the council to have an opportunity to interact with him. Thank you.
Thank you, before I call the next four speakers, let me point out that the reappointments, those reappointments are items four, 19, 20, 22, 23, 43, 44, and 45, that includes all of the ones whose deadline is August 4th, does not include the one that is August 8th, it actually leaves only three who are not reappointments, unless I have missed one on the agenda here somewhere. They're all reappointments except items five, six, and 21. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, there are eight reappointments and three new appointments. Mrs. Chik, you're next.
Yes, colleagues, the, you know, in terms of the council's role in affirmation or confirmation of commission appointments, in many ways, that, that role hasn't changed at all, I mean, that was a role we had before the new charter, it's the role we have in the new charter. Councilmember Goldberg, I think, very well explained, the last time we discussed this, the new heightened importance of that role, because the new charter now takes the council out of any role in the removal of commissioners. I'm not prepared, I don't think that we should be looking at how to fight or change the charter, the charter is what it is, and we've just adopted it, but I do think we need to look at heightening our role, and it never should have been a rubber stamp, and now is the time, because, as you all know, and some of you better than I, how important the commissioners and the commissions are, especially, for instance, the proprietary departments that, that award millions and millions and millions of dollars every year in, in contracts, and in many ways has a great deal of independence in their activities, and the commissions run those departments, and how much time and talent it takes to do that. I'm going to support Mr. Hernandez's motion, but with one change, if he would accept it as a friendly one, and that's simply since no one is here today, and I don't think we should drag them back, that we hold off any decision until Friday, because the CLA can come back on Friday with at least the following information, to tell us a bit more about the whole composition of those commissions that these reappointments are, are being made to, and one new appointment, to talk to us about the, the compliance with the policy issues that was in Councilmember Galanter's motion, and won't be fully reported on until next Wednesday, but we can hear that about, about these nominees and act on them on Friday in time, and play our role. The others will wait until Wednesday, we don't want to, I don't want to drag them back again, and I'm very close to supporting Mr. Bernson's concept that reappointments should be supported. The only reason in my mind to take off an ongoing commissioner at this point in history is if they had some kind of egregious behavior or lack of performance, and if that, the mayor shouldn't be reappointing that person. But we need to look at this in an integrated, comprehensive way, and to have some kind of policy, some kind of comprehensive approach. It shouldn't be about, oh, I know that commissioner, that commissioner's a nice person, and we should stop worrying about commissioners thinking it's about them personally, we are all in, in positions of responsibility and authority beyond that, it's of course not about the individual, it's about one thing, good governance, and what's in the best interest of the city, and if it isn't in the best interest of the city, to be pulling off innumerable commissioners from important commissions at this point in time, then we shouldn't approve the replacements. I look forward to that report next week, thank you.
Ms. Goldberg.
I actually, I don't, have no idea how I'm going to vote, because I agree with pieces of everybody's, but, but let me just say a couple of things, first of all, I would really urge the Pro Tem Chair, in the absence of our president, to appoint an ad hoc committee to review all further appointments, and, and involve the CLA staff to have a real process, you know, we're the only, we're the only group that has a confirmation process, that has no process at all, actually, it goes to a committee, we don't, it's one of the millions of things that we do in Sacramento, and this charter, remember, was supposed to bring us in line, more in line with state and national government, they have staff devoted to doing background checks, to really looking at what people will bring, what their views on are, are on critical issues, and they make a real decision, and I think we should be doing that, and I would urge you to, to, to do so, and to start that immediately. In the, in the meantime, I think that we should put everybody over until Friday, I do want them to come back, I made a public appeal the last time this issue came up, asking if people want, apologizing for not having been anything but a rubber stamp, which I have been on these up till now, and asking anybody who wanted my vote on confirmation to call my office and make an appointment, to date, no one has taken me up on that. And if I am going to be voting on folks, and I have no contact with them, I'm going to vote no, whether I know them or not, because at some point or another, we have to start taking ourselves seriously and behave like a deliberative legislative body, we have been transformed by virtue of the charter into a legislative body, that's it, period. Okay, then we ought to behave like one, and a legislative body that behaves like one has a process of confirmation hearings, requires people to attend them if they want to be confirmed, and takes itself seriously and takes the job seriously, otherwise, bring them all at once, we'll vote aye on all of them, and we'll be the rubber stamp that we're behaving like we are, and it has nothing to do, frankly, for me, with the whole flap at the harbor, that's a different issue altogether. This has to do with whether or not we're going to take ourselves seriously as a legislative body with a duty to do due diligence and looking at every appointee that's made, so that would be my request, and I would ask that the people, even if they have been here before, that they come on Friday, that are up on Friday, that we only take up the ones that are up on Friday, we take the rest of them up later, and I'll so move.
Okay, I hope I'm keeping track of all the motions here, Mr. Holden.
We are not acting like responsible adults, or, and we not acting like responsible elected officials, those commissioners like participating in a tennis game, and we on one side, the mayor's on the other, and they're the tennis ball, they're being knocked from one side to the other, and they had nothing, they didn't even put themselves in the game. Now, the real issue that caused this to happen is what happened to Ted and a few other people, and that's what you really ought to deal with, each and every one of them will be confirmed if you don't have eight votes to say they shouldn't be confirmed. Now, we know the game- Now, we know the game we want to play, and it's not tennis. Hard, cold stone politics. And the fact of the matter is that if you want to send a message, then get eight votes to say no to a particular replacement, period. Let these other people go. Me have nothing against them. I mean, just play the game, don't drag it out. Now, my candidate, from my district, which you all know, Albert Hudson, Ninety-Ninth Pursuit Squadron, flew daylight missions over Germany. His father was Mr. Silver Rice, heads up Broadway Federal Savings Bank, chairman of the board, immensely qualified for this bank position. Now, you can't be knocking him around. No, 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 no. So I think we're just stretching it too far here now. Ms. Goldberg says she won't vote for anybody that won't call her on the telephone. Well, she should vote against all of them because they always shouldn't call. They were dying here, and nobody went over to talk to them. It's just not fair.
I don't talk to them in the middle.
Oh, I know, Ms. Goldberg. I know, I know you mean well. You're saying, what you're saying, toe to line. I agree with that, toe to line. But in all fairness, my God. Let's do what's right. And I got to tell you that for the one that you really don't want, they all will be confirmed unless you make a motion to oppose and you get eight votes. Now, those people who sit on the council, those elected ones, who supported charter reform, now you're doing a double talk. Answer to yourselves. And Ron Deaton, I got to tell you about it. You had Ms. Chick over there, chairman of charter reform and all, and they just keep caving in and caving in and caving in. And I sit there and I say, I'm going to vote no. What they didn't lose in terms of influence, when the charter was adopted, they gave away with amendments and ordinances changes. I just don't want to hear from you guys anymore. That's how bad you are. I guess my time is up.
Perfect timing, your time's up. Ms. Misakowski.
I think, as Jackie said, there's something said by everyone around the room that has merit, and the question is fascinating where we are. I tend to think that Mr. Burnson's point was well-taken, and that is, whatever we did in the past, particularly with those eight of the eleven that are reappointments, they came to us, we heard them in our policy committees, and I dare say that most of the members of the council who are on various committees know better the commissioners who serve on those respective commissions that are, report to their agencies. We also know that all of us get very involved with almost all members of the Board of Public Works. We know we all get involved generally with all the members of the Planning Commission and the former Board of Zoning Administer Appeals because we all interacted with them. So it's not just a rubber stance that they go away and we don't know them. For those council members who have their very respective committees, we know how those commissions operate and how those members operate. We also have at least a part of a vetting process in our Ethics Commission, and we've seen very often that commission appointments will come up here, and there will be a letter from the Ethics Commission saying, we have this concern or that about this person's ability to form that task for reasons of potential conflict or something else. So I think that, for the most part, however lightly we've taken it, we have taken responsible. And in all the reappointments, we have a track record. We have a track record of those commissioners, how they have acted, and I don't think that's going to change, and I don't think a policy that we're going to come up with is going to change, those who've been there. And some of these commissioners, I think, the ones who were here yesterday and got continued for a day, are reappointments to the most important, one of the most important commissions that we have out there now, the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And to unsettle that appointment that was just made within the last year under the new charter and hold that up is, I think, problematic. I think we ought to let those, where we can, maintain that continuity, maintain delivery of the program that they are charged with, to deliver us and the citizens of the city a neighborhood empowerment plan for neighborhood councils. So I agree with Mr. Burnson's recommendation. I think we should confirm the eight that are reappointments, continue the others, and have those come forward in contest because those are new appointments, and that's where it's fair to raise a higher level, a higher standard of review. And then look very much forward to the report that Mr. Deaton's going to provide, and whether or not we can come up with a better vetting, background check, information that doesn't get into a litmus test of how are you going to vote on this or how are you going to vote on that, which we have to make sure we stay away from as well. But I think going ahead with the eight today that are reappointments makes sense.
Mr. Hernandez.
You know, members of the council, I have to disagree with the motion Mr. Burnson has made, and Councilmember Misakowski, just a second. And I think that this dialogue is important. I think this council, for whatever reasons, has not done its job when it comes to commissions in the city of Los Angeles. Now, my issue about commissions has been primarily geographic representation. My issue regarding commissions has been a reflection of the city. And I think that very clearly, when we get back the report, we're going to find that we have some very strong deficiencies in regards to the makeup of commissions in the city of Los Angeles. And it's not the first time we've tried to set this kind of a policy. And those deficiencies existed prior to charter change. But I'll be real honest with you, I think those deficiencies existed because there's fifteen of us, and in many cases, our districts had more than its lion's share of representation. And we allowed that to happen. We, our citizens, our constituents in a particular district, were very well represented when it came to planning land use management issues. I, on the other hand, know that my constituents were not. There wasn't a reflection geographically of the city. But I know when those issues were brought up, as a whole, this council confirmed it. And that was our reality. And what we have today is another attempt of the council trying to figure out how to honestly deal with that. And I honestly believe that we have to look at the reapportionments as well as the new appointments if we honestly want to review that, and if we want to deal with the deficiencies in the system. At the same time, I think it's important that we recognize that the citizens who participate on commissions in our charter ask for that participation, and we have to respect their roles in this process. So again, my motion is simple. I don't want to give up my right to vote on a commission appointee, and so anybody who is due before us, if we don't take action, would be appointed. I'd like us to take action on. And all the other ones, I'm willing to hold up to get the report so we could review it.
Okay, thank you. When you made your motion before, I thought you—
I changed it because I understood it differently, but now my understanding is that I only want to deal with the ones that—
No, I understand that, but you had said something earlier about not requiring any of them who've been here before to come again. I just want to know if that's—
And I still stand there, but it doesn't have to be part of my motion.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Members of the council, nobody else has asked to speak, so I'm going to take the prerogative of the chair for a second, and just, and then I'm going to try to summarize all the motions that are in front of us. I think that it's important that we had the discussion that we just had because what it shows is that we really are not, as a group, certain what is the best way to proceed and carry out our responsibilities under the revisions that have happened as a result of the new charter. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge that we are groping toward a consensus for how best to do that. A number of you have characterized the process in the past as a rubber stamp, and I'd like to take a little bit of issue with that. I like to think that we have tried, many of us have tried, most of us have tried to acknowledge that the mayor, it is part of the mayor's job to make commission appointments. We don't get to make those appointments, we get only to review those appointments. And on the whole, I think we have, over the years, tended to take the position that it's the mayor's right to pick people he feels will best represent what he wants represented on the commissions, and absent some egregious problem, we tend to go along with those decisions. And I think that's a legitimate point of view. I do, however, have a great deal of sympathy for the concern that people have expressed that under the new charter, we need to look more carefully. But as I've taken notes on everybody's motions here, and the clerk and I will compare notes here, we have a number of different ways to proceed. And I'm going to try to, I'll run through them for you in a second, and then I'm going to try to pick them out in an order that makes the most sense for us to vote on. Mr. Ridley Thomas set the basic motion, which we seem to have a consensus on, that we want the report back from the CLA's office, and that we want to continue those commission appointments that do not have a deadline before that until at least that date, which is a week from today, which is the ninth. No, wait, that was, it's coming back in a week. Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion was to continue the whole thing until Wednesday. Hold on, hold on. Mr. Hernandez then requested that we continue, that we take action on the ones who have a deadline before then, which is, well, I'll go back to those in a minute, items twenty-two, twenty-three, and forty-three. And twenty-one is an appointment. The others are reappointments. Twenty-one is the eighth. The Friday deadline is the three I just mentioned. And that we continue the others until Mr. Deaton's report comes back. Mr. Burnson proposed that we take action today and approve all the reappointments today. Ms. Chick suggested that we continue everything, including the reappointments, till Friday, which is the first deadlines that we have.
Only the ones that expire on Friday.
And the others, you were going on till Wednesday, Wednesday. Hold on. Somebody here wanted to continue until, Jackie, I think, wanted to continue the ones who are up Friday until Friday and ask them to come back in, even though all, three of them are reappointments. And there's one up on Tuesday that's a new appointment. And Mr. Holden told us to do what's right. And he did, which I thought was a good motion. I support that. I support your motion. Mr. Deaton, wait, hold on. Mr. Deaton wants to be heard.
Since I had something to do with getting in this confused state, I would suggest the following: that you continue the ones for eight-four until Friday.
Okay.
Ask them to return.
Yeah.
We will have our report on Tuesday.
You'll have it on Tuesday, okay.
And we will continue everything else to Tuesday.
Until Tuesday, that's the next deadline.
And invite them all back, if you would like. So everybody will be here on Tuesday. We will consider the three on Friday for reappointment, that would be, the deadline would be passed on eight-four, and everything else we continue to Tuesday. Our report will come back, and then you can—
All right, so your report's going to come back on Tuesday, not on Wednesday?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, I can repeat that back.
Point of order.
But hold on one second, Mr. Holden. The only thing that's on this list that's not consistent with that is—
Mr. Burnson.
Mr. Burnson's motion that we approve all the reappointments.
And Ms. Chick's motion, which says, consider them on Friday, so there's two things.
Yeah, but that's, she wanted to consider on Friday the ones that—
That's not consistent with what—
It's consistent with what Mr. Deaton said, yes.
You're saying come back Tuesday?
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with Mr. Deaton's suggestion. What I, my statement was this: that we should not penalize people who are innocent, innocently involved here, serving the city. And as Mr. Holden said, we should do the right thing. So I just wanted to make my statement that the people who are reappointments have already served or already have a track record, that we should not make them victims in this situation. That was the purpose of my motion. I'm perfectly willing to go along with Mr. Deaton's suggestion as long as we have the ability to act on all of these people.
I think you'd be acting on Tuesday.
So we'll be acting on next Wednesday, is that the case?
Tuesday.
No, what we'll be doing—
Next Tuesday.
What we'll be doing is, on Friday, if this is acceptable to everybody, on Friday, the people whose confirmation deadline is Friday—
Yeah.
—will come back before us—
Yeah.
—and will act on those. There are three of those.
Okay.
On Tuesday, which is when Mr. Deaton will have his report, we'll have his report, and we'll ask everybody else to come back, and we'll take up everybody else.
Will that include the reappointments or not?
All of them.
It will be a report on all of them?
That's right.
Including their proficiency and what they're, those that have served?
Best weekend by Tuesday. Given the, there are certain guidelines the council—
I'll withdraw my motion in favor of Mr. Deaton.
That's what I, thank you. Okay, now here we're going around again. Ms. Goldberg, go ahead.
I just had a point of information.
And Mr. Holden does, too.
The point of information is you've dealt with everything—
Except your ad hoc committee.
—in all motions, except for the recommendation that we have an ad hoc committee to begin processing these from here forward.
That's correct. I did not deal with that. And I haven't forgotten, I have it written down, but—
All right.
Okay. You want that in the form of a motion?
I think so.
It is.
Okay, then I will move it.
It's been seconded.
All right, thank you. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Deaton, these appointments before us, because there is a report associated with the name, is that correct? There is a report existing, is that correct?
Yes, on indeed—
Then how would you plan to change the report by Tuesday? Would you add or detract?
The council adopted a series of criteria some months ago relative to commissioners, and what we're going to do is put these commissioners just to position to those criteria so you can look at, it has to do with geography and expertise and—
For time-saving, wouldn't it have been appropriate for you to have done that when it came before us, for this, for these meetings?
If I had been so instructed, Mr. Holden—
No, no, they instructed you when they made the adoption before, you should do it. It should be ongoing. Each time they put before you, you should have a profile.
The last time was—
You should always have a profile, and you have not been doing that.
This is true, but I recall that the action of the council was to request the mayor to do it.
I know, I know.
But I'd be happy to do it, Mr. Holden.
Yeah, you should do it consistently.
I will.
And you know what?
Nate, Nate, don't let him get away with that. He just volunteered to be the mayor.
He volunteered to do what?
No comment.
Well, he's already, the sixteenth vote in the council, which means he wins sixteen to fifty most of the time. And, you know, they're saying, I go with Mr. Deaton, I go with Mr. Deaton. And I remember a guy running for president—
Wait, wait, so are you going to go with Mr. Deaton or not?
No, I'm not going to do that. You know what? There was a guy running for president once, and he had the convention in San Francisco. He made a speech to the American people, he says, "Wake up, America."
Yeah.
Remember that one? And I'm saying that to the council, wake up and do the job that we elected to do, and do not give the power away to you-know-who.
Mr. President, Madam President, it's time up.
And later on, when he's gone, you'll be saying, well, what did he lead us? Follow the leader over the hill.
He's got another whole minute.
All right, I'll give you that.
Okay.
Would you care to tell us what presidential candidate that was, Mr. Holden?
Don't provoke him. All right. Now, do we need to take a separate vote on the, all right, so, we're going to do a vote on what we came up with at the end, which was Mr. Deaton's recommendation, then we're going to do a vote on the ad hoc committee. Mr. Deaton's recommendation, everybody with me here, is that we're continuing items twenty-three, twenty-four, and forty-three until Friday, I'm sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three, and forty-three until Friday, and we're going to ask those nominees to be here. We're continuing the rest of the items to Tuesday, at which time we will hear the CLA's report and take action on the rest of the appointments. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Hallelujah. Okay. Now, one more thing. Ms. Goldberg has a motion to request that an ad hoc committee be appointed to do preliminary confirmation review.
I just want to ask a question on that. You know, they're already interviewed by the committees that represent the area they're being appointed to. I just wonder, is this going to be discontinued? Are they going to go through a double process? Or could it just be the Government Efficiency Committee, which already exists?
I think it should be, at this point, an ad hoc committee because I believe next July, there's going to be a reorganization of all the committee structure. That's why I asked for the ad hoc.
Well, I do understand that.
My recommendation would be that, since most council committee agendas are very full, there's nothing to prohibit it going to both, but a chair could decide that as long as it's going to the ad hoc committee, they need not come there. That would be a discretion of the chair.
The only thing that I, you know, the reason that it makes sense the way it is because the people that have served on an existing committee, whether it's now or July or whenever it may be, are those that are intimately involved with that area of government functions, and perhaps their review is important, so—
Well, then, we could, if we leave it to the discretion of the chair, the chair can decide whether they want to hear them or not.
I don't have a problem with the additional review, I just wanted to ask whether we would still have that ability.
Yes, absolutely. You have that option.
All right. Do we want to vote on this?
Yes.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Look at all those items we've already taken care of. Moving right along.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, item number one, I believe there's a card from the public on the item.
There's quite a few cards from the public on item one, so let's call that special.
Well, do you want to do the public hearing?
Hold on, wait, let's see what else we've got. We have a lot of cards on item two. We have one on item seventeen.
I'll be back.
And one on— And one on item forty-eight. So let's see if we can clear off the agenda, and we'll come back to one and two.
I might add, on item one, we had full public hearings on all these...
Well, that's why we're going to clear up the agenda first. Okay. So we'll hold one and two on the desk, and go ahead.
Okay. Next, then, items noticed for pub, excuse me, items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through eighteen.
Okay. Members of the council, any specials, items seven through eighteen.
I just have a clarification on item ten. It lists Council District 12, but it's talking about the Encino-Tarzana Community Plan. Now, which is correct there?
CD 11.
It's CD 11, okay. And, please note that it's CD 11 rather than 12.
Okay. Any specials?
Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen called special by Ms. Goldberg. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Holden calls seventeen special. Anybody else? Through item eighteen. Okay. Open the roll, close the roll. Whoop, hold it, hold it.
I just moved the re-adopted committee report.
On which one?
On seventeen.
Seventeen, oh, okay. All right. So we're on items eight through eighteen, with the exception of thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Actually, seven through eighteen.
Seven through eighteen.
What did you report on, then?
And Mr. Holden moved the committee report on seventeen. All right, we'll call seventeen special. Let's, go ahead here. All right, seven through eighteen, with the exception of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you, thank you. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-four through forty.
Okay. We have cards on, we don't have cards on any of those. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Any specials, council members?
Thirty...
Who said that? Alex. Thirty-nine, Mr. Patel.
Twenty-four special.
Twenty, twenty-four?
Yeah.
Twenty-four, Mr. Burnson.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, Mr. Fuhr.
You want a Fuhr?
Mr. Holden?
You go fourth with on seven, fourth with on seven. And you should thank me in the back, all you, before you go out. Thank me, thank me.
Fourth with on item seven. And you're welcome. Okay. Any specials? Any more specials?
You know, we are...
All right. Item twenty-five through thirty-two, and thirty-four through thirty-eight, and forty. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Moving right along.
On the continued agenda, item number forty-six, public hearing has not been held.
Okay. I don't have any cards on that.
Forty-six special.
Forty-six special, okay, Ms. Goldberg. All right. And that brings us, I think, back to, the rest of them are closed session, which we'll hold on the desk, right? Okay. So we're back to item one. Now, Mr. Burnson says a lengthy hearing was held. We have a number of cards on both sides.
Item one is one.
Item one, yeah.
We have five minutes on each side, that's all.
Okay.
But item one...
Item one.
Thank you.
All right. Five minutes on each side. I don't know which side you want to hear first. Let's start with usually, Mr. Burnson, which side do you want to hear first? Or, Mrs. Walters, it's yours, I'm sorry.
Here are the appellate.
Which, which side do you want to hear first?
Here, the four first, and the against last.
However you like. All right. These are just in the order in which they came...
Four closing that should be last. The ones who are supporting the ZA report should be last.
Maybe you better, maybe you better look at these and tell me which is which.
Appellants should, normally, we hear the appellants first and then...
I know, but I have two piles of cards here and... All right. All right. You want to hear the appellants first?
And those who are...
Supporting the closure.
Supporting the closure, last.
All right. Thank you. Okay, here we go. Mr. Weiser, followed by Mr. Patel and Mr. Rogach.
Morning, Madam President, members of the council. Frank Weiser, on behalf of the appellants. Even in exercising your legitimate right to regulate what you believe to be a public nuisance, in the exercise of the interests of the public, there are constitutional parameters. And what we have raised here in this appeal is that we don't believe these regulations that are being placed on the hotel meet the parameters of the, both federal and state constitutions. In particular, at the time that we met before the committee, there was a regulation that was placed on the hotel that the police, or I believe any city official, would have the right to inspect the guest register or any books and records of the hotel at, quote, "anytime." And that clearly does not meet the requirements under the Fourth Amendment under a case called New York v. Berger, a 1989 U.S. Supreme Court case that says that even in closely regulated businesses, which we will assume for argument's sake is the case here, there still has to be some kind of limit as to, quote, "time, place, scope," as to a judicially, a warrant substitute in the regulation, so that the police do not have absolute discretion in exercising their rights under the regulation. And that just isn't the case here. Saying that they can come onto the property at any time means they can knock on Mr. Patel's door at three o'clock in the morning, anytime they want, and demand to see the records, and not have a neutral magistrate or some independent judge determine whether there is both either reasonable cause or probable cause to do so. So we believe that language is constitutionally infirm, and the council should clearly look at that, regardless of whether you believe the evidence supports the zoning administrator's proposal or not. Secondly, there was the issue of the security guard, and I believe Councilman Burnson went a long way in terms of trying to mitigate the economic impact on my client by reducing the amount of time from 24 hours to 12 hours. But we don't think that goes far enough. The problem here is, once again, the Supreme Court has said that even in the legitimate exercise of your police powers, a regulation can go so far that it can still constitute a taking under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment. And I think the prime issue here is, these property owners, in particular, Mr. Patel, will not be able to survive having a security guard 12 hours a day. It has to be refined in such a manner that it would be more towards the particular time that the police really have a concern, rather than just some kind of a blanket restriction on him. And I think if we had gone to a court of law, if this had originated in some kind of a public nuisance abatement action, a judge would have looked at the evidence and balanced both the property rights versus the public interest, and seen how the property owner could afford to live with this kind of a condition.
Mr. Weiser, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, you have about a minute and a half left, and if you want the other two gentlemen to speak, that's up to you guys, but...
Okay. And I'll just be very brief. Finally, we don't believe the evidence supports, we don't believe there's substantial evidence to support the findings of the regulations in general. I have Mr. Patel, who is the operator of the hotel. The main distinction here is, all the events that are being claimed that occurred at this hotel happened with his previous lesssee. He took over the property, or he took back the property, in July of 1999, and as I understand it, there are not any significant problems since that time. He's made a tremendous effort in terms of cleaning up this property. And I would like him to explain that more fully to the council.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Patel.
Hello. Me and my wife, we run the property for 24 hours. We have somebody that sits for us at nighttime for eight hours. And regarding the security guard, 12 hours would be a bit too much, even 12 hours. And another thing is, I've already, we pay taxes on the bid program through the city when I pay my property taxes every year. And I got my property taxes with me right here, and it shows that the bid program, I pay $1,600 a year on it. And I've never called them this last two year. And I also have a tape that shows around six to eight hours of the front desk and the part of the office. And in the office, it shows that, well, you can clearly see on the tape that there's no nuisance going on. After I took over, I pretty much cleaned up everything. I mean, I evicted people, and some of them that voluntarily checked out, I don't take them back again. They even come back every time they want a room from me, but I won't rent to them. But then again, if you can pick up their property tax and the tape...
Thank you, Mr. Patel. The time's actually up. Did you want to let Mr. Rogach say a word?
Can we just have the property tax bill and the tape entered in as evidence?
Yes, certainly. The sergeant will take care of that. All right. Thank you. We will now move to the second five minutes, and hear first from Mr. Porter and then Ms.
Good morning, members of the council. If the chair does not mind, I'd like to go first. I'm Mary Lee, and I'm here representing United Coalition East Prevention Project, which is an organization dedicated to overcoming alcohol and substance abuse problems in the Skid Row community. What I'd like to do is ask members of United Coalition East to stand. There's several of them with us here this morning, who are extremely concerned about the property known as the Linden Hotel. The nuisance conditions really are horrific. They are extremely dangerous. And I think the ZA's report and the police reports that are part of the file will more than reveal not only the problems that occurred at the time of the investigation, but that those that are still remaining to this day. We urge you to support the action taken by the Plumb Committee to deny the appeal and to impose corrective conditions. I believe that Mr. Weiser's legal arguments are misplaced and inappropriate and contrary to the way to the evidence in this matter. We welcome and believe it's long overdue to have the kind of cooperation from city agencies in this community, which has struggled with criminal activity, drug and alcohol abuse, and dealing prostitution for a very, very long time, and put at risk the health and safety of those who live and work in the Skid Row area. The conditions that are being suggested are reasonable and will greatly improve the operation of the hotel and will improve the quality of life of the residents of the community. I'd like Mr. Porter to make some comments to you today that are specific to the operation of the Linden Hotel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Porter.
Good morning.
Pull the mic up, you'll be much more comfortable.
Good morning, council members. My name is Charles Porter with the United Coalition East Prevention Project. And basically, I wanted to represent one of our coalition members who was unable to make it today, who was a manager of a hotel which is connected to the back of the Linden Hotel. And he testified at the Plumb Committee, and he submitted syringes that he found that were coming from the Linden Hotel and from the property, and he wanted me to also submit for him today, since he was unable to make it. Six syringes, which he found the past weekend on his property, which were thrown from the Linden Hotel's property, that he wanted to be submitted into the file. And it's an ongoing problem. And this took place the past weekend, and we ask that you deny this appeal and assist in our efforts to improve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and the matter is now before us. Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Captain Maisland from the L.A. Police Department if he would come forward for just a moment, please. And while he's coming forward, council members, this action was appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Board of Zoning Appeals denied the appeal, imposed corrective conditions as a first step in the continuing review of the nuisance, and determined that the zoning administrator did not err or abuse discretion in imposing the corrective conditions. Now, Captain Maisland, I understand that this is indeed a nuisance and has required the resources of Central Division on numerous occasions. Could you share with us what information you have about this particular piece of property?
Actually, we've made narcotics arrests during the last year, both outside and inside the location. We've had neighbors complaining. But let me refer right now to Detective Mary Dyer from Organized Crime Advice Division that has a little bit more of the specifics.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My purpose in speaking today is to give you an account of the recent activity at the Linden, located at 413 East Seventh Street. In all fairness, there has been an improvement in maintaining their motel register. A video camera has been installed in the lobby. But the loitering in front of the location has decreased. But we do, however, as the captain spoke, there are still narcotics inside the location, and we have a concern with that. Historically, it has been a problem, and that's all in the file for your review. We believe that the zoning administrator's findings were accurate and very reasonable, and we hope that you would deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, with this testimony, I would urge the council to deny the appeal. The speaker who spoke against imposing the conditions indicated something about him paying his taxes to the BID. The BID testified at the appeal hearing that their security, they conducted a one-week study. Their security personnel went by five minutes of every hour and recorded their observations in front of and adjacent to the particular property. This period was in July, from July 22nd to 29th. They have not gone back, but they, the conditions that they found are consistent with the conditions that the police department raised as well. So I urge a denial of this appeal. Thank you very much, Captain Maisland, and thanks to the coalition members, all of you, for coming down to support the denial of this appeal.
Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you. In Planning and Land Use Management Committee, we consider this as we have all of the others. And members of the council, the committee, and I'm sure Mr. Burnson and Mr. Hernandez will concur, we look at each one of these individually. We look at the number of rooms, we look at the kind of incidents, we hear individual reports from the police department, not only what the zoning administrator and planning had held, but then, since most of those predate our time, when we get them, which is maybe six months to eight months or longer from the time the police last reported, we usually get the police update about whether or not the situation has changed. And where we see some degree of work towards improving the situation, we look and in some instances, modify the conditions. And in this case, we did so, but we still ultimately recommended denial of the appeal and the imposition of these conditions, as fashioned by the zoning administrator and modified by the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, to really reflect the specific case going on there, the specific evidence that was provided, and the information in the file. And in this case, it clearly, and the two issues that we modified were, one, where security had been suggested 24 hours a day, we modified it to 12 hours a day, at the period of time that most correlated to the highest number of instances that had been occurring. And also, modified, at one point, I think the condition had said that any person who registers there has to have a valid photo ID and be fingerprinted. And we indicated that it's a valid photo ID or fingerprinting, so that at least there is some way of knowing who that person is. And so I think that, again, there is a discerning of difference in each of these individual cases, but ultimately, in this one, the zoning administrator essentially correctly stated the facts as supported by the evidence from the community, from the police department, and that was upheld by the BZA. And the Planning and Land Use Management Committee is recommending denial of the appeal, modification of two conditions, but moving forward with the conditions imposed by the ZA.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, Ms. Misakowski has pretty much summarized most of what I was going to say, but let me just add a couple things. Obviously, there are some serious problems that exist in this area with the residential uses that affect residential use, drugs, prostitution, loitering, and other problems. And as you heard, we do look at each case individually. It was obvious in this case there are serious problems in this particular building related to it. The officers have worked closely with the council office and also with the planning department, the zoning administrator, to give us current information, which we appreciate. And I think that the conditions that were imposed here are fair. We did modify a couple, as you heard. We also got a commitment that the material on registration, including visitors, such as the video camera film, would be available to the police department so that they can monitor and make sure that criminal element and drug usage are out of the building. And under these circumstances, I would urge the proper action is to adopt the committee report, which is to deny the appeal in part and grant the appeal in part because we did make a couple of small modifications. So I would urge adoption of the committee report.
Members of the council, one, I also stand to commend the work of not only the city departments, the police department, as well as the zoning administrator and the planning department, but also the United Coalition. I think we remember when we were first approached a while back about not doing anything in the area of Skid Row, and that the quality of life just wasn't functioning. And you need to understand that there's a lot of agencies who are trying to do some work there, whether it be the Veterans Association, or it be Skid Row Housing Trust, or it be a variety of other organizations. Yesterday, we dealt with the deal with Shelter First. And there's a transition going on because we are enforcing some attention to basically the quality of life issues in that particular area. And one of the concerns that I've expressed as this transition is happening to a better quality of life, that we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. You need to know that in this particular case, we reviewed it, and the conditions that were imposed, we felt should have to be imposed, and they're necessary to deal with the transition. And we are looking at these on a case-by-case basis. And as time is going by, we're finding a transition that I think, one, is putting enforcement of conditions that are dealing in a very difficult area, and at the same time, creating environments that say we will be enforcing those conditions. We also have to try and balance it with the reality of how do you get these units habitable? And how do you make these units affordable for families? And continue to improve the quality of life of all the residents who are there, not just the transient community, not just the community that's dealing with ICE, but rather a community that actually lives there, and how you improve that quality. And that's why I think it's important we look at these on a case-by-case basis. And we understand that through time, things hopefully will get better. And in getting that better, we create the motivation to continue that direction as opposed to the direction that it was going to in the past. So again, it takes a lot of parties, and a lot of parties are putting a lot of effort in this direction, and now the city is participating in that. And again, I stand to commend all those parties. You need to understand, we looked at these conditions, we listened to all the arguments, and that's why I think the committee's recommendations should be adopted.
Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the Plum Committee for their work on this, and I also want to thank the zoning administrator, Mr. Daniel Green, and he's here someplace. Mr. Green would stand, yes, here he is, over here. As has been said, there's a lot of work that's been going on for well over a year now in trying to bring about a change in conditions under which people are forced to live in the Skid Row area. And we all remember when the United Coalition was formed and came here to make us informed about the activities on Skid Row. And so at this point, council members, I would urge support for the Plum Committee report, support for the zoning administrator's report, and support for the Board of Zoning Appeals in denying this appeal of the owner from the conditions imposed.
Okay, there being no more speakers, open the roll on the committee's recommendation, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ice.
That's approved. The committee's recommendation is approved, the appeal is denied. Next item.
Item number two is also an item notice for public hearing. There are cards on the item.
Oh, yes, there are. Same order. Well, now, some of these say general comments, okay, against the appeal. I'll assume the general comments are for it. All right, so we're going to have now also five minutes on each side, is what we did last time. All right, so we're going to begin with Mary Bally, followed by Alan Golden and James Nakazuka.
Madam Chairman, my name is Alan Golden. The other speakers have yielded their time to me because of the limitation we have. There's no doubt that the conditions on Skid Row need to be improved, and they should be improved. The issue that we have with the conditions that have been proposed is there is no relationship between these conditions and improving anything. They impose an unreasonable expense on the landlord for a security guard, which in reality would cause the hotel to be closed and take the occupants of the 25 occupied rooms in the hotel and put them out in the street if this process were to go fully forward. I also think that when one wants to correct a nuisance, it's very important that there be some sense of proportion, and that civil rights and personal rights should not be trampled in the effort to have some sort of feel-good thing to say, "I did something to make things better on Skid Row." The conditions call for the refusal to register persons who appear to be under the influence of drugs or alcohol. That condition flies clearly in the face of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which identifies alcoholics and drug addicts, and I provided each of you with a copy of the ruling from the Department of Justice, that these groups are specifically named and protected under the Americans with Disabilities Act. The conditions require that the security guard and the owner of the hotel summarily evict persons from the hotel if they believe, if they suspect that they are engaged in a number of enumerated criminal activities. This is inconsistent with Fair Housing policies and the policy of the city of Los Angeles, which require that there be notice and a hearing by a judge and a hearing on the question of unlawful detainer, and the judge makes the determination as to whether or not the evidence supports the removal of that person from their home. There are also a number of equal accommodation provisions in a number of Civil Rights Act, which would be completely inconsistent with the imposition of these conditions as drafted. There's been a great deal of discussion here about statistics. This process has been going forward for about a year now. During that last year, the owner voluntarily made the minimum stay in his hotel 14 days. I spoke this morning with Detective Dyer and asked her of the list that was presented at the Plum Committee, how many of these incidents took place inside the hotel and how many were outside. The number that took place inside the hotel within the last year, according to Ms. Dyer's, I understood her, was zero. There were two deaths in the hotel, both drug-related. One was evidently ruled a suicide, the other an accidental drug overdose. However, the actions that the owner has already taken have virtually eliminated criminal activity within the hotel. What happens on the sidewalk is something that, over which the owner has no control. I can assure you, he does not encourage people to loiter there. This hotel is directly next to the drop-in center, which is a magnet for people on that block and in that area, and people are drawn to that sidewalk and the great 48-foot expanse of the Ross Hotel because of its adjacency to the drop-in center, not because of anything that the landlord does do, and certainly not anything he could prevent. There have been innumerable federal rulings that indicate that people have the right to stand on the sidewalk. And because the conditions imposed would deprive people of much-needed, low-cost housing in the city, because the imposition of the conditions are in many cases unconstitutional, I would ask that the owner's appeal be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and, oh, I'm sorry, that closes that half of the public hearing. So we'll now switch, restart the clock, and hear from Mary Lee and Troy Moses, in whichever order you elect. Thank you, Mrs. Walters. I got distracted here. Go ahead.
Council, again, I represent United Coalition East Prevention Project. I would like to clarify just a couple of remarks that the appellant just made, just to call your attention to the fact that this case was filed prior to the drop-in center opening, and the kind of criminal and nuisance activity that takes place at this location existed prior to that time, and in our view, and based on our observation, continues to exist at this particular venue. There is a history of egregious nuisance activity at this venue, and that is why we believe that the conditions that were reviewed by the Plum Committee are so very important. As Mr. Hernandez indicated in his remarks, each of these cases is given a case-by-case review, and the same is true of the work that our members do in terms of monitoring each and every one of these locations and considering the impact that they have on the health and safety of the neighborhood as a whole. We have heard, for example, that many operators, this one included, have considered using the premises for other purposes in the future and don't believe that the conditions might be necessary. We really want to point out that there's quite a bit, in fact, turnover of properties in this area, and what unfortunately happens is that conditions don't get recorded, conditions don't get imposed, and new owners take the property without full awareness of the kinds of circumstances that have occurred. We want to make sure that there's a record, not only of the problems, but a specific and spelled-out roadmap for how to make improvements and the kind of business standards that will be required in locations that happen to be in very, very dangerous neighborhoods. We would hope that those arguments and the arguments made by the applicant just now will not deter you from imposing these conditions. My familiarity with Fair Housing laws, with Americans with Disabilities Act, and with landlord tenant law in the state of California would lead me to conclusions that are directly opposed to those that the applicant just made. There is nothing in those statutes that allows and condones criminal activity, and there are nothing in these conditions that would eliminate or reduce the property owner's ability to use California state eviction proceedings to evict or move tenants out of the property, and no one would argue anything other than that. But what we do argue is that, as Councilmember Hernandez indicated a moment ago, there is a change occurring in the Skid Row community. It is a neighborhood, it is home to families with children, to people who work in the area, and to people who are trying to recover from very, very distressing life circumstances, homelessness, et cetera. They deserve neighborhoods that are decent, safe, and sanitary, just as the rest of us do. Mr. Troy Moses, who has continually observed this location as a member of United Coalition East, would like to present you with some additional information. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Troy Moses, and I'm here representing the United Coalition East Prevention Project. The members in attendance today and those who are unable due to time constraints. Our coalition is dedicated to the reduction of alcohol and drug-related problems in the central city area known as Skid Row. For the past six months, I have observed lottery, prostitution, drug deals, and public drinking in front of the Ross Hotel. And as recently as July 17, 2000, I observed and caught on video several drug dealers standing in front of this hotel exchanging small packages, excuse me, small sacks for money with people passing by. I have the video of my observations, which I would like to place in the file, documenting a drug transaction, public drinking, lottery taking place directly in front of this location. The video shows the drug dealer removing a cracked rock hidden in his mouth, and also the buyer putting the rock in his mouth to test the purity of the cocaine after the transaction takes place. And this accident occurs at 8:40 in the morning. We ask that you deny the appeal and assist us in our efforts to improve the quality of life in Central City East. The area has demonstrated itself to be a high-risk area, and even if this hotel is converted into an apartment complex, we would like the conditions to remain the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Ms. Misakowski. Hold on, Mrs. Walters, she got up before you did.
I have no problem.
All right, Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, council members, the conditions that exist at this hotel are egregious, and they need to be conditioned. They need to follow through on the conditions imposed by the zoning administrator. The police department and the fire department have long records, as I understand it, indicating numerous calls and numerous activities that are unlawful at this location. I would ask Captain Maisland and the sergeant to share those with us at this time, and the fire department to come forward as well.
If I may, the council file is replete with examples of criminal activity inside and outside the hotel, even during the last year.
Council members, could we kind of laudate people around the side so we can hear Captain Maisland, please? Thank you. Captain Maisland.
Even during the last year, there's numerous criminal activity going on outside. I would give you a very, I think, a very, with high probability, a good guess that if I had enough resources to devote even more time to have officers there on a more frequent basis, it would be even a greater list of activity. But the problem is, there are just too many of these locations in the Skid Row area to devote the amount of time that we would need. Since the initial report was made, there are still problems at the hotel. The manager is not there all of the time. The security guard is not licensed. There is no video camera. There's been no measures implemented to deter loitering activity at the location. And, you know, I would beg to differ with the representative of the hotel that spoke in favor of it. I think there is an obligation of the owner of a piece of property to take care of the outside of their property, be it in front of, on the side of, or behind. We would expect that on the west side of downtown, from the Biltmore, if there was a problem, and we would also expect that from the Linden Hotel on the east side, I'm sorry, from the Ross Hotel on the east side. In addition to the, and I think it was pointed out, there were two death investigations inside the hotel. One was a suicide, and one was an overdose. So clearly, we would support the denial of the appeal and adopting the finding of the zoning appeals and the Plum Committee.
Great. Is the fire department here also to testify on this? Fire department is not here to testify on it, but the file shows that the fire department is coming forward.
John Callahan, Fire Department. I know that the Fire Department has been cooperating and providing statistics on our response data and have been moving that over. I don't have specific information on that at this time.
Thank you. That information is contained in the file, and I want to thank the, again, the United Coalition, the zoning administrator, the police department, and the fire department for their work in seeing that this appeal is denied. Thank you very much. Outstanding work. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would urge council members to unanimously vote to deny this appeal.
Okay, Ms. Misakowski.
The committee report reflects that recommendation of denial of the appeal with slight modifications, and again, varying the security guard hours to that that was tailored around this particular area. And I just wanted to respond to two things also that the attorney representing the hotel owner asked for or mentioned. And he said that the conditions were not related to the problems there, and in fact, they most specifically and directly are. If there were responsible management, responsible ownership there, we wouldn't be before us today on problems at the site that are specifically land use-related by the operation of this hotel, or the bad operation of this hotel. And I also wanted to indicate that the condition, which specifically reflects that there be a recordation of these basic conditions, is critical because, as was indicated, what we see in I think almost every case that's come before us, we say, gee, I'm the new owner, I'm the new manager, things are different since I got there, attempting by way of flipping this property around, which occurs repeatedly in this area, to indicate that by just doing that flip, someone could say, "I didn't know," and give me another year or two or three to make it better, when in fact, the conditions don't change. So by recording that on this property and others, these reasonable, responsible management-type conditions are appropriate and will be on the file on the deed for anyone else looking at it. And we have seen where those kinds of things have happened already by responsible owners in this area, that there is a noted diminution in problem, a noted significant change in the area, and I think you're seeing that from some of the testimony from the United Coalition East members about that sense of restoring, recreating a stability in that neighborhood that I think everyone would want to be part of.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, members of council, I also rise to support the committee report. In this committee report, it was pointed out that the committee can't support a boilerplate-type set of conditions, and one of the amendments that you'll always see that we have to make for constitutional reasons is the requirement of fingerprinting. Basically, the committee report amends that requirement to fingerprinting those individuals who don't have a who don't have a photo ID. And it's because you can't require fingerprinting of everybody, blanket, if they produce a photo ID and so forth. And so that is one of the amendments we have to make in committee, and that's part of the amendment at this time. I also wanted to comment a little bit on the issue of the conditions on the covenant. And again, I recommended and again, agreed to the conditions being part of this covenant. What it also means to us is that when we're dealing with issues of financing and subsidizing public housing and trying to improve units, the city's the one that has to step to the table. And Councilmember Mizakowski and I had a very short conversation as to why the private sector doesn't step up to the table to provide some of the financing for some of these units. And a lot of it tends to be the requirements that exist on the units. It's kind of like pointing a red flag. And when we deal with issues of redlining and we're dealing with a lot of issues as to why banking institutions aren't participating in particular areas, a lot of it tends to be the kinds of conditions that exist in those areas and the kinds of conditions that come with title, as to whether they're willing to invest into that kind of property. So again, we have to deal with that issue somehow. We have to figure out some resolution so that we can provide financing for responsible owners. In this case, what's happening in that particular area is those owners who are stepping up to the table tend to be nonprofits, tend to be organizations. It's not the private sector trying to improve itself. And so again, I just wanted to mention it so that we could start formulating some kind of policy decisions in that kind of regard. There's a reason why the public sector has to participate in housing, and that's because the private sector isn't doing that job. And it's not like Los Angeles has adequate housing for everybody.
Item two is now before us, the committee report. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is unanimously approved. Next item.
Item number thirteen called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Okay, thirteen and fourteen and fifteen are all the issues relating to the proposed ballot measure, so I'm going to suggest we take, yeah, let's take them all together, but you called them special.
Madam President, before we do that, item thirty-nine, I don't think is a contentious issue. I had called it special for the purpose of making a statement in brief presentation. There's somebody from the police department here, but if there's no questions, I know we're in for a long meeting, and we can move forward on that item.
All right, so you're moving approval of item thirty-nine?
Item thirty-nine, correct.
Any objection to approval of item thirty-nine? Open the roll on thirty-nine, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is done. That is approved. Okay, we're back on thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. I'm sorry, what?
Came over. That was actually the one I wanted to vote no on, so.
Which one?
Thirteen.
No, we just, we did thirty-nine.
I'm sorry.
You're okay.
There's thirteen up there.
We were about to do thirteen, but Mr. Padilla, who had called thirty-nine special, decided to jump in and just get it approved.
Well, thank you.
And twenty-four, according to Mr. Burnson, who had called it special, is also okay, so he's moving approval on twenty-four. Any problem with twenty-four? Open the roll on twenty-four, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Nice job. Look how fast that was. Moving right along. Now, anybody else called anything special? Okay, we're back on thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Mr. Deaton.
I would recommend that you vote on fifteen first. Fifteen is the combining of the two, annual regulation and the fire, and would be the recommendation of the chief legislative analyst that you combine both of them. I think it is the appropriate.
All right, now, the only problem with voting on that first is I think Ms. Goldberg, who called them special, wants to split.
That's fine.
You don't care? All right.
So I think that this has been discussed before. We have the appropriate ballot title for all three. As I said, fifteen.
And the remaining issue, just so everybody's clear what we're doing here, thirteen and fourteen are the two separate ballot propositions, and fifteen is the motion to combine them and do them as a single item on the ballot. Ms. Mizakowski.
I will move.
Wait, wait, your mic's not on yet.
I will move Mr. Deaton's recommendation to move item fifteen and receive and file thirteen and fourteen. And in so doing, let me put on a desk, there is a technical amendment that needs to be added, it's just technical language on the ballot, that I think is going to be circulated now on fifteen. If we vote thirteen, it needs to be done as well, but let me move the fifteen A, which is just the technical language on the resolution.
Wait a second. This is, the agenda says fifteen is combined?
Right, right. And fifteen, if we approve fifteen, we need to do this technical language amendment to it. If we don't do fifteen and do thirteen and/or fourteen, fourteen has the language already included, thirteen does not, but at this point, my motion is for fifteen, for the combined bond public safety facilities issue and with a technical language amendment.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hernandez is next.
It's, the technical change is a reimbursement provision. It allows us to spend money, and then if the bond issue passes, there'll be reimbursement for the bond issue. It's a.
It's a.
Comment, I mean, it's a.
It's a cash flow problem.
Right, and it's a routine technical change.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, Madam President, hopefully you have my time up. You know, I rise because I wanted to vote on thirteen and fourteen separately, because I'll be voting differently on each one. And if we vote on fifteen first, it would require me to vote no on fifteen in order to be able to vote no on thirteen. And so I would ask that we vote, take thirteen and fourteen first, that would be my motion, and then we can vote on fifteen as a whole. But that way, at least, we get to cast our votes on thirteen and fourteen separately. Well, that would be my motion. On his time, Mr. Deaton can respond, but this is my time.
You have more of your time.
And the reason I'm voting no on thirteen, it's not because I don't support the fire department, I've always supported the fire department, I think we need more facilities. But I think you all know that I kept on saying, part of the problem is in three council districts, the first, the thirteenth, and the fourteenth, all we get is an assessment. And one of the things I was fighting for was the Frank Hotchkins Regional Training Facility. And it was basically a citywide training facility. One of the responses was that it was recommended that citywide facilities not be placed on the ballot. And that didn't make sense to me, because it's a citywide ballot. But for some reason, Frank Hotchkins wasn't out there. Now, what's bothersome to me is I know we're going to get that facility as part of the city's family, and it's going to be a building that's going to need some tremendous amount of work. But I was disturbed because I had a meeting with Roy Romer from LA Unified School District, and he's under the impression that the school district's going to be able to use that facility to put a school. Now, I wouldn't want to accuse the mayor's office of suggesting to the school district that they look at that site, but it's bothersome to me that the school district would be looking at a city facility site at a time when they're trying to find alternatives for the Belmont Learning Center, and at the same time, we choose not to find some financing to do the improvements the facility's going to need. And so I wanted that to be part of the statement I'm making today, because to me, we need a citywide training facility. And we are acquiring one from the federal government, we shouldn't be preempted by the school district from it, and the school district should know it's a city facility. And it should have been part of this bond issuance. And my sole purpose for voting no is because the constituents in my district, basically all they get is an assessment. But I think that Angelenos as a whole are being denied the opportunity to fund a citywide training facility that is very important to the city, and I wouldn't want it to be because it's being considered to be a high school. And that's my statement at this time.
Ms. Chik.
Yes, I have also an amendment to make, and a very quick and easy one, and it's an amendment to thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen to cover all the bases, as Councilmember Mizakowski just did. In the footnote of Exhibit One, I'm moving that we change the language, instead of regular, regularly report, to quarterly report. Delete regularly and put quarterly, that was the intent. I think four times a year is an appropriate number of times. And also to add, actually, it says regularly advise. I want to change it to quarterly advise and to add the words "and" report, so that it reads, "The Citizen Oversight Committee will regularly, will quarterly," I'm sorry, "will quarterly advise and report to the mayor and council." I thought, however, Mr. Deaton, and I'm just catching this as I'm looking at it, that the Oversight Committee, we were intending to model after Prop K, which has several committees, but the one that I was intending was the Oversight Committee of CLA, ORS, the owner department, et cetera, and that it's that group that's overseeing the contract, the projects, and is reporting through the appropriate council committee. So I'm looking at Exhibit One, and it talks about the language, additional program provisions. Because you remember my motion that's going to put this into place as a standard item going forward, but we haven't adopted the ordinance yet.
What we can do, as opposed to changing this, is that I'll prepare a motion, and we can, for both, one or both of these, to provide for an oversight and establish an ordinance like we have in Prop K. And you can bring that in on Friday.
Okay, but I want to make sure that either separately or together, however the council vote goes today, that that language is in there, so that there's an Oversight Committee that's making public reports quarterly.
Fine, that's no problem.
Also, I just want to go on record saying that I think these are two separate issues, colleagues, and that it behooves us to present them to the voters as two separate issues. I am going to, after having my questions addressed and feeling that we're doing this in a responsible way, certainly I know the need is there, that I recommend that these go on the ballot as separate bond measures, and that's the way I will be voting today. Thank you.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of the motion to present these two items as a single ballot measure, and to state again, my strong support for each of them. There's no question that when it comes to our fire facilities, our firefighters need to be able to operate out of stations which are safe for them and which are most conducive for their response time being as short as possible. And that's not the case now. I think with only one exception, the buildings at stake in the firefighter ballot measure are the existing facilities. I think with one exception, we're really replacing facilities we already have. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, there's no question we have to do this, and we have to do it now. All of us are focused on two different aspects of the fire department, one, fire suppression, and the other, the ability of our emergency medical services teams to get to scenes as fast as they possibly can. This ballot measure will help fulfill those goals. Regarding the animal services issue, if we don't move forward and create these additional animal services facilities, we are literally committing thousands of animals to sentences of death on the street, because without places to put them, when we collect them, there is only one alternative. And we can't allow that to be the policy of the city of Los Angeles. Instead, to vote in favor of the animal services proposal is to vote in favor of humane treatment of our animals, and as well as, of course, voting in favor of enhanced public safety. I think both these measures, because they do lead directly to improve public safety in the city, are appropriately merged together in a single ballot measure, and I urge us all to support that approach.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I want to be supportive of placing both ballot items on the ballot for both the fire facilities and the animal services shelters. However, I do not want them to be on the list of the same ballot argument. So Mr. Deaton, procedurally, I think the motion that is before us by Councilwoman Mizakowski is to receive and file thirteen and fourteen and vote on fifteen. How do we vote in support of thirteen and fourteen, short of wanting them to be combined? Make a motion that we take thirteen and fourteen first, and if those are both approved, and then take up fifteen to consolidate them, so those of us who want to show our support of each individual item can do so?
You can do it that way.
Might not be the way you want it to be done, but.
You're accurate in that respect.
Yeah. Madam President, I would like to move that we vote on items thirteen and fourteen first, and after those are approved, as I'm sure they will be, then we consider voting on item number fifteen to combine them. So for those of us who want to show our support of the items independently and don't want to combine them, we can do so. And I so move.
Okay, thank you. I think that's similar to what Mr. Hernandez moved, and I heard you second at the time.
If that's what we're doing, that's fine.
Well, we're not there yet. Mr. Wax.
Well, I was just trying to clarify, but I could support that. I personally do want to see them combined, but I think each individual council member should have a right to cast their vote on one, on each item separately, and then we could vote to consolidate them or not. How many votes does it take to consolidate? If we approve thirteen and we approve fourteen, then how many votes would it take to consolidate?
Eight.
Okay, well, then I think that's clearly the way we should go. I think each council member can be given an opportunity to vote on each of the items as they seep in, and then I would certainly vote to, after that, if they're both approved, to consolidate them. I think it's a very effective campaign. I mean, I see this Dalmatian campaign, which takes, which takes both. It just, it takes both, and it even takes care of Mr., it even takes care of San Pedro as well, so I think it could be very effective.
His name is Bruin, and he's, when Bruin got hit by a car, more money was raised to take care of his injuries than we've been able to raise for housing programs in this city.
Ms. Galanter, I'd just like to clarify, this is Gail Weingard.
Yes, thank you.
It takes ten votes each for item thirteen and item fourteen, because they're general obligation bonds, but then.
To combine them would only take eight.
Combine them would only be eight.
Okay.
But I want, no, wait a minute, Mr.
No?
Yeah.
All right.
After they're both passed, yeah.
All right, Mr. Holden.
I just want to know what does dogs and cats and fire protection have in common?
Sparky the Dalmatian.
His name is Bruin. He's from that fire station I'm vetting.
Have in common? And I think that's the question that the taxpayers and the voters are going to ask. In some cases, you'll find that the measure that supports the fire department will be carrying the animal regulations measure and vice versa. And then, on the other hand, you got to find out, you should have taken a poll already to know whether or not one could very easily hurt the other, and you'll never get the votes you need. I understand what you're doing, you're saying, well, let's go with the ballot resolution of necessity to be adopted regarding fire facilities, general obligation, fine. Then if you're going to go for animal services, and you're going to combine the two, they go, what are those guys thinking about down there? There's nothing in common.
Mr. Holden, I think the common thread, and it's one actually that was because of state law, we had to combine, it went, because the public safety issues of both of those. And it also, by combining them, allows us to do one message on the need for all this as opposed to having counteracting messages, and I would strongly recommend that you combine them.
So, like in the movies, when there's a fire and some person is still trapped in the house, the man won't go, but he'll send the dog.
And we need a shelter when it's over with, yes.
And they need a shelter when he goes in and get him out. Well, the fire department, they still using animals? You still have dogs.
Yeah, they got rid of the horses.
And they have dogs at home and in the fire station, so, well, maybe they do have something in common.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we now have the items before us. We had Ms. Mizakowski's motion to vote on item fifteen first, we had Mr. Hernandez's motion to vote on them in order. Do you want to withdraw yours and?
Then to consolidate them in fifteen makes sense.
Okay.
But Madam President, it's clear that by voting, say, for thirteen on its own, that we are not precluding the possibility of voting for them being one measure, right? Just one more time.
That's correct. That's correct. We have to get both of them in a position to go on the ballot in order to vote to combine them. So, now, let me point out to you that we have two separate items under each of thirteen and fourteen, the ballot resolution of necessity and the ballot title resolution. Do we need separate votes on each of those?
You need.
Do we need to vote thirteen A and then thirteen B?
Yes.
Okay, so let's take them in order. Thirteen A is the ballot resolution of necessity on the fire department facilities. Open the, oops, I just got a whole bunch more people who want to, wait, wait, wait. I've now got, I've now got five more people who want to be heard. I don't know where you all came from.
Take them away.
No? All right, Mr. Fuhr votes, okay, 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 come on.
They came out from under a box.
No, 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 they came out of a fire station. Here we go. Whoops, now I've got six. The amending motions were, Ms. Chik moved to amend all three of the items to include a quarterly report as opposed to a frequent report, and we have also the technical amendments that have to be made. So let's do the technical amendments first. We can, right, we'll just vote the technical amendments for all of them, and then we'll get to whether they're going to get on the ballot or not. Open the roll on the technical amendments. Close the roll, tabulate. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, one down. Open the roll on Mrs. Chik's amendments, which is the same amendment for all three of them. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Two down. Okay, here we go. 13A, ballot resolution of necessity with respect to the fire facilities. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
Okay, that's approved. Item 13B, the ballot title resolution for the same one. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That's approved. Item 14A, ballot resolution of necessity related to animal services. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That's approved. Item 14B, ballot title resolution for the animal services facilities. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, item 15, combining the two of them into a single ballot proposition. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
That is also approved. All right, so, I only have, I only have one on the agenda here, but let's do, all right, so we'll consider that the title vote, and now let's do, oh no, I guess we have to do them all separately. The resolution of necessity for the combined proposition. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
And now the ballot title for the combined measure. Open the, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. It's been amended.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
Okay, that's still approved. Fourth with on the whole shebang there. Okay, next item.
Item number seventeen, call special.
Now, Mr. Holden told me that was taken care of, but we do have one card. You want to be heard on item seventeen? Okay. First question is, this one did or did not have a public hearing?
It did, but it's a communication from Mr. Holden.
All right. Since it is just a communication, not a committee report, we're going to hear from Russell Chi of the L.A. County Probation Department, if you're here. Mr. Chi?
I don't know.
Are you, Mr. Chi?
Yes.
We want you up there, please.
Getting guns out of...
While he's walking to the podium, I need a motion to receive and file items 13 and 14 now that we've done 15. Ms. Misakowski moves, Mr. Fuhr seconds. Okay, Mr. Chi, you're on.
Well, good afternoon to the members of the council. I'm Russell Chi, Deputy Probation Officer from the Los Angeles County Probation Department. I'd like to apologize before the council that our main spokesman, John Tuchek, will not be able to speak on behalf of Disarm because he is currently in, he has been currently delayed in an operation occurring in Altadena. So in his place, I'll be discussing Disarm and intend on gaining your support and approval for the program. As a quick synopsis, the Los Angeles County Probation Department has 120 felony probationers, 30,000 of which have special conditions of search and seizures and conditions of not to possess or own any firearms. 20,000 of the 30 are adults and 10,000 are juveniles. As a lead agency for Disarm, we have taken a proactive approach in monitoring our probationers and have armed seven DPOs to conduct search and seizures with LAPD and L.A. Sheriff's Department. An example of our efforts, last month, we have notably discovered and removed one full-blown meth lab, approximately $115,000 in drug money, and over two pounds of marijuana, and approximately 40 firearms. Our efforts are most, are certainly most going to have a positive effect on the safety on the community and the communities that we service. Our department stands before the council and urges the council to strongly consider and support AB 24 through 7.
What does, what does...
Mr. Burns?
Yeah.
Soon as I get a microphone.
What does Disarm mean? Is that the question?
I got it, I got it, okay. What does this legislation give the probation department, what power that it does not now possess?
Well, we hope to expand our Disarm program from seven deputies to 20.
Just tell us what the difference is. We don't need all the other stuff that you give. What does it do? How, specifically, what differences it make over your current rights as an enforcement?
Well, as far as my understanding is, that we're, that we're only trying to gain additional financial support through the city.
What is that support? Tell me. That's what I need to know.
It's going to support additional deputy probation officers to conduct search and seizures of people that are on probation.
Additional, is that in terms of dollars or in terms of empowerment?
All right, in terms of dollars.
I see, so it's strictly in terms of dollars?
Right.
So that's all that's involved in this is dollars? It's not a change of rights or additional authority or anything?
No, sir.
Well, see, Nate, you misunderstood that.
No, that's not what he said, no, I know.
Yeah, okay, it...
No, it's the probation officer.
Okay, so he's not giving us the information of what this really does? Can we have the CLA perhaps tell us what the difference is?
Well, Mr. Burnson, let's let the gentleman finish talking, because it's his time. This is our public hearing, and then he'll stick around and he'll, I'm sure, be happy to answer questions for you. And I have several other council members who also want to be heard. So, would you like to finish first, and then we'll get Mr. Burnson's questions answered when we get there?
Well, I've pretty much stated all that we want to state in regards to Disarm.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here. Don't go away, we may have more questions for you. All right, Mr. Karsh, did you want to say something? And then I have four people who want to be heard.
The bill is, as of today at least, it's still set in Senate Appropriations Committee on Monday. It has passed unanimously in the Assembly, 77 to 0. It passed out of Senate Public Safety Committee, 4 to 0, on June 22nd, and is now set in its last committee on Monday. The governor did, however, veto $7 million in funding for the program out of the current budget. He directed the Department of Corrections to review the effectiveness of the, of the Disarm operation, and he has verbally said that he will probably put this in the budget that will be proposed in January for 2001, 2002. Considering all of that, it may be that the bill, which does not appropriate any money at this time, could be pulled from the committee hearing on Monday.
Mike, can you...
What does it do as far as empowerment?
What does the bill do? It expresses the intent of the legislature to fund the Disarm program. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Fuhr.
Madam President, with your, with your leave, I'd like to defer to the maker of the motion, the Chair of Public Safety, and then speak following Ms. Misakowski.
Go ahead.
Madam President, Mr. Fuhr, I introduced this because I thought the program made sense. It was being put forward by the California probation and parole officers, showing that there has been a weak ability to enforce those felons, dangerous felons, who are released on parole with the prohibition of having a gun, and yet, or drugs. Many of them may return to households where there is a gun, and that has been problematic because of those guns, whereas where there's a youth, perhaps the adult can have a gun and have it in a secure place that the youth can have access to. But if the felon, who is not supposed to possess a weapon, is in a household with a weapon, we know where that can lead, and I think it can lead to trouble. So I think that this, as proposed, made sense. I understand that there has been discussion with the governor and discussion with other law enforcement agencies, and this was essentially in an effort to try to develop a program with appropriate law enforcement and correctional association organizations, to come up with something that made sense. There were some questions to whether or not this was being supported by the governor, money withdrawn from the governor, but I think inasmuch as the bill is still alive, that the concept of it makes sense, and that is to ask for support by these organizations to come up with a program that they feel can work, can be constitutional, and makes sense, in the ultimate goal of making sure that paroled felons are not put in the situation, and there's an obligation in terms of where they choose to live, that that household itself should not have a weapon there. And I think that that does make sense in concept, and so I would recommend that we support it, or at the very least, send it back with the CLA for discussion with our own law enforcement agencies to see if we can help fashion how we might support it with whatever concerns Mr. Holden and others might have, because I think in concept, the idea's a good one.
Okay, Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to say, the idea of having the probation department be more assertive about assuring that high-risk probationers not have easy access to a weapon is one that all of us should support. This is an important, you know, the number of recidivists among these probationers is huge. A study showed that 2/3 of these probationers commit another crime within three years of their sentence, and they commit it with easy access to weapons. So the probation department says, "Well, let's cut off that dynamic where it starts," and attempt to preclude probationers from having easy access to those weapons. Now, it's true that, given the governor's veto of this, that right now, the bill is in sort of a state of suspense at this moment, right, Mr. Karsh? I mean, basically, this is going to become a two-year bill as, as a matter of practice? No?
This is the end of the legislative session, so they cannot become two-year bills from now on.
Okay, so what's going to happen, given the governor's veto, what precisely is going to happen to the bill?
Well, I don't know. It is still set for a hearing on Monday. If it clears Senate Appropriations, it would go to the Senate floor, and if it passes, go back to the Assembly for concurrence, and then it would go to the governor. It would be an expression of intent of the legislature to continue Disarm. It would, since he's already taken the money out for the current fiscal year, I guess that would be added impetus for him to do so in the new budget.
All right. And, because it does seem to me that we should be supportive of the concept. I think Ms. Misakowski put it very well, that among the policies of the probation department should be precluding high-risk probationers from being placed in a situation where the issue Mr. Holden raises could even become a problem. There shouldn't be in households where there's easy access to a weapon, because somebody else living there already has one. I don't know, I, law enforcement is strongly supportive of this, is a reason why, because we know who commits crimes, violent crimes, with guns. And I am going to urge that we support the concept of Disarm and work with our advocates in Sacramento, if fine-tuning is necessary, and with the probation department, so we can diminish the number of crimes committed with guns in our city.
Mr. Holden.
Madam Chair and members, nobody's perfect. They cross the line, law enforcement officers and probation officers. And when they do, they invade the rights of others. And my position, no, is not to give them an opportunity to do so of the innocent. Mr. Fuhr talked about a certain percentage, Mr. Fuhr talked about a certain percentage of probationers returning to prison for committing a crime. He even said they did it with a weapon. In fact, he did not say they returned because they've committed a crime for using a weapon. Now, I know some probation officers, and I know they're not perfect, I worked for the county for 13 years, I had to save a lot of them, because they falsified documents in order to get a conviction. And Mr. Fuhr is not listening again. They falsified documents, probation officers, to get a conviction. And what would prevent them, and I don't want to give them any more latitude to do that. The fact of the matter is that if a person is on probation, that's under the county's jurisdiction. If they're on parole, that's from the state's jurisdiction. It is completely different. One is county, one is state. If you're on probation and you've been, you have a probation officer, and you leave to go home, and your parents may have a weapon that's secure, if you don't want the kid to go home, put him back in jail. But do not punish the parents and say, "No, you can't protect yourself," or "You can't even have it in a locking key." I don't think you would be, allow yourself to be put in that position. And I'm not going to impose it on an innocent, law-abiding citizen to have the probation department and even law enforcement violate their rights either. This is a violation of the rights of the innocent that could be used as such, under the guise of saying, "Let's put the criminals in jail." We're doing that. In fact, we got so many in jail, they're letting them out because you can't put that many more in there. You keep approving laws and legislation to lock them up. I've been heard, General, the General spoke the other day, what's his name, the Joint Chief of Staff? No, no, the other one. Colin Powell says, "Let's stop building jails." All right? He said, "Let's stop building jails." What he's really saying is that you creating more laws to convict, to convict, to convict, except when it comes back home. If it doesn't affect you, you don't give a damn. The fact of the matter is that a lot of innocent people are being affected, a lot of them are being cut deals when they're innocent, and they shipped off, and now we know what's been happening. I would say to you that this is a bad bill, and that's why the governor vetoed it. The current law will permit the probation officer and the parole officers to jail anyone who violates the law and possesses a gun when they're on probation or parole. The halfway houses that they're released to, very often, the owners must have a weapon. What are you going to do? Take that weapon away?
Okay, Nate.
For their own protection?
Mr. Holden.
Go away.
Mr. Burnson.
I still don't think I got a definitive answer. What the governor took out of the bill was the money. He didn't veto the bill, is that correct?
No, the money was in the budget.
And he took it out?
Yes.
So he hasn't vetoed the bill as yet?
No.
Okay, now, please, Mr. Holden, please, Mr. Holden, let me talk. What powers that are now, now in place under California law are additionally made available to the probation officers in this legislation for getting the money?
There isn't much.
Well, what is it? Tell me what the difference is.
It's, it's a commitment by the legislature to continue the program, to have it legally authorized as a pilot program to get going.
Is there anything in there that says that a parent who has a child come home from, or an adult child even, from, on probation, cannot own a gun in that house, or the child cannot be there? Is there anything in that legislation that says that? Yes or no? I want a yes or no answer.
Sir, the legislation does not include, I'm Lieutenant Don Farrell from the Gun Unit of LAPD, the legislation does not expand the powers of the probation department at all, it merely funds a program to allow the probation department to proactively...
Okay, you've said enough. Okay, I got that part before. Okay, now, I'm going to make a different motion, okay? I'm going to move that we approve the legislation and urge the governor to refund the money that was taken out, because I think the program's a good program. I don't think it's taken away any constitutional rights. I think it's merely giving the probation department the ability to enforce what they're supposed to do. And I don't have a problem with that. But we would urge the governor to fund this. In fact, if it can be funded out of additional funds now, we should hope that that would be done, so it doesn't have to wait for next year's budget. And that would be my motion.
Okay, Ms. Goldberg.
I would prefer nobody to have any guns at home at all, but I do actually know for a fact that warrantless searches often yield some pretty terrible situations for people who are not the subject of the warrant, if there were a warrant. And that's a problem, because when you come in, because you have a person who's on probation in a house, they're living with people who have done nothing wrong, unfortunately, you end up frequently making victims out of the people who just are housing a relative, a neighbor, an uncle, a daughter, a son, and, and that's my concern about it. This, this bill only involves sending $25,000, I believe, to each county, so it's probably not going to make much difference either way. But I do think that the, the specific prohibition against warrantless searches in the United States Constitution was put there for a reason, and I think it's an important thing to defend. And so that's why I, I would prefer us not to take a position than to support this. So I'm going to move no position on this, because I think taking a position on this to support it is also not necessarily where we want to be. So I'm going to move that we, we take no position on this bill.
Mr. Hernandez.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Karsh a question regarding probation. What is the council's policy regarding supporting funding for the probation department?
We have no pre-existing policy that I'm aware of.
We have no pre-existing policy. And is there any legislation pending that would provide funding for probation officers to be assigned to schools?
I'm not aware of it.
And I, I hope Mr. Ridley-Thomas kind of hears this, because we've been dealing with the whole issue of the role of the Department of Probation working with law enforcement in regards to dealing with our whole issue of suppression, as well as prevention and intervention in regards to gang activity at schools and violence. And here we're talking about funding probation officers to basically deal with the issue of guns in homes, and we're not talking about funding the Department of Probation for purposes of preventive measures to be part of a school network, even though we know it works. of preventive measures to be part of a school network, even though we know it works. And we, as a city, have actually taken the position with our communities participating in reconstruction, of funding probation officers for schools. And I just wanted to bring that up, because as we're debating this issue, we have no position of supporting the Department of Probation's activities on the prevention side and seeking funding for that kind of purpose. And I'd like Mr. Karch to basically come back to us with something in that regard that we could maybe initiate as a city to help the Department of Probation. In regards to this particular legislation, I think that we want to be able to have a comprehensive look. I also believe that the Department of Probation has a role in law enforcement, in basically seeking compliance. And because of that basic belief of be supporting the legislation, but at the same time, I feel that a stronger priority for the city should be seeking funding for the Department of Probation in the areas that we are trying to work with our law enforcement agencies. For example, the CLEAR Project, where probation works hand-in-hand with the police department. And I keep on hearing the problem being funding. And that's a county-funded agency, and we need additional funds for that kind of activity.
Mr. Karch, did you want to respond to any of that, or?
You could put that into a position on this issue, that you want to seek funding by the governor of disarm, as Mr. Burnson recommended, and then also add in there an urge that the governor fund probationary efforts in preventive programs, such as in the schools.
Yeah, CLEAR and schools. You know, members might not be aware...
Mr. Chair, you might as well come back up here. I'm sorry, I don't need to keep you standing there all this time. Come on back up here and join the crowd. Okay, Mr. Holden.
Members of the council, this matter was heard before the committee twice. Police representatives here today, probation department was there, and this is going to be a task force, primary function funded for, it's going to be very disruptive of innocent people's lives. Now, I'm telling you, they have the authority to do what they should do today. If there's someone violating their probation, in possession of a weapon, take them off to jail. But I must tell you, when you go into the home of innocent people who committed no crime, and that's what a task force will do, you're giving them a license to disrupt that family environment. And that's what the officer told me at the committee, and that's what the probation officer said at the committee, yes, that is likely to happen. And it's all on tape. I was frightened for that. I mean, I can see storm troopers coming right now, okay? And invading somebody's home. I am not going to go along with that. If you're opening a door, you're giving them an opportunity to be, which they can do, it's not a task force being funded for the purpose of doing it, which is altogether different. They can go in and inquire whether or not the person have access to a weapon. If they don't have access to a weapon, then they go away. But I can tell you right now, having worked with the probation department, and I've helped them a lot too, in the bonding arbitration, giving them the funds that they were entitled to. But the fact of the matter is that some of them are not very pleasant people. If they get mad at some guy who's on probation, they will invade their home, they will raid their place, they will do anything to become disruptive and make a point of putting the guy away and disrupting their family, their family life. And then they would have a pilot program that they can do it with. That's this program. The people I represent would probably be the ones who's most victimized. And for that reason, I'm not going to support this legislation at all. It should never have been adopted in the first place. I would urge the governor to veto it again in principle.
All right, thank you. So far, that's all the speakers I have. And let me formally close the public hearing from Mr. Chair's testimony. We have Mr. Holden's recommendation, which is to not support the bill, to oppose the bill, I'm sorry, to oppose the bill. We have Mr. Burnson's substitute motion to support the bill and urge the governor to fund it. And we have Ms. Goldberg's substitute motion to take no position.
I didn't hear a second on Ms. Goldberg's.
Well, I didn't hear a second on Ms. Goldberg's. Is there a second? Huh? Is there a second on Ms. Goldberg's? I guess not. It seems to be an up or a down here. All right, so we're going to vote first on whether to substitute Mr. Burnson and Mr. Fuhrer's motion, as amended by Mr. Hernandez. Are we all clear over here? This is on whether to substitute Mr. Burnson's motion, as amended by Mr. Hernandez. Open the roll on whether to substitute. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
All right, that was approved. Now, we have Mr. Burnson's motion, as amended by Mr. Hernandez, before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
Okay, that was also approved. Thank you all. Everybody clear on what that was? Basically, we're supporting the bill and urging the governor to fund it. And we will then receive and file the committee, the communication. Okay, next item. Ladies and gentlemen, let me just let you know that we're down to 11 members. Mrs. Walters may be able to return later. We have a number of items before us. Next item.
Item number 33, called special by Councilmember Fuhrer.
Mr. Fuhrer, would you push this?
Thank you, Madam President, yeah. Very briefly, I called this special. This is a matter that might involve an appropriation, but had not gone through the Budget Committee because of the timing of the request. And I've had a chance to speak to Mr. Fujioka this morning. And, Bill, I take it the bottom line for you is that you have no alternative but to seek an additional person to perform the work required by the LAFCO effort, and that, at this point, it's premature to know whether there'll be a fiscal impact or not. Is that true?
That's correct.
Right, and when will you know whether there will be one or not?
Well, I saw our intent to first use any salary savings we have, and at mid-year, we'll determine if we have sufficient funds for this position. If we do, we will not seek an appropriation. If we do not, we'll be coming to your committee for an appropriation.
Are you hiring an additional person for this, or reallocating the duties of somebody to this task?
No, we will hire an additional person.
Okay. And again, the work required is essentially to be the point person in the city for the collection of data and analysis of it under LAFCO?
It'll be a member of the team. Ellen San and David Hirano will be the, still have lead responsibilities, but we need an additional person to function in a lead capacity with the operating departments, whereas Ellen has the overall lead capacity for the city.
Now, I got to say, while I'm not thrilled about the further expenditure of taxpayer funds for this effort, it also is absolutely imperative that we get the information that is required under this process. And if you're representing, there's no other way to do it, then I will support the request from Ors.
That's true.
Anybody else? Item 33 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 46, called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Okay, we also, oh, all right. What happened to? Item 40. Oh, we did item 40, okay. Fourth with on item 33. Thank you. Okay, item 46, Ms. Goldberg, you called this special?
Yes. I wanted to know what streets would be closed, for how long, on what days? And then there's a section in the report that's very vague about authorizing the closure of any streets as needed. Would you explain how the decision to be closing any streets as needed will be made? And who will make that decision? And if I could hold my time, then I'd like to follow up with just little questions.
Frank Martinez, DNC Coordinator's Office. Basically, the motion lays out for you a series of street closures in the downtown area.
Beginning when?
Starting July 29th, closing Georgia Street August 5th. We have some closures. This is basically installing the security perimeter around Staples area.
So there are streets already closed?
I think Georgia Street between 11th and Olympic is a street that's been impacted first, yes.
And what is the date of the closures of the other streets?
August 5th. There's a series of closures, then August 7th, and then the final, August 11th.
Because, as I, you know, I don't represent the district, but I've already gotten phone calls from people who are saying that they're, these are not business people, and these are not protesters. These are just people who live there, who say they are worried that they're not going to be able to get in and out of their neighborhood. What do I say to them?
We have...
I don't, see, they were expecting closures the four, maybe six days right around the convention. I said to them, point blank, no streets have been closed. Of course, now I hear I'm wrong, one at least has been. But I guess they're getting notices about them, and people are beginning, these are just residents. I asked them specifically. And they're worried about getting kind of trapped and not being able to get in and out of the area for a lot longer than just the five or six days the convention is, which is the only reason I called this special.
The reason they're calling now is that we're actually beginning to build the security fencing. You first have to lay the K-rail and then construct the fence, so it's not an overnight process. We are keeping the streets open as long as we can. We're ensuring access. We have deployment of traffic officers out there. Also, we've...
How are we notifying the residents in the area of where the alternatives are and things like that? Because that seemed to me, notification, I think, will go a long way to dealing with at least the little panic in the voice of the person who managed to find me this morning.
As a matter of fact, DOT staff have been passing out flyers throughout the area.
In Spanish and in English?
Yes, I'm here, Sadati, Council liaison. We've gone back, Councilwoman, and created a flyer with the map in English and Spanish, and our staff's going door-to-door to businesses and residents.
That's probably what's generating the phone calls, because people are saying, oh my God, I'm not going to be able to get to the freeway, oh my God, I can't get to the store, or whatever.
Additionally, there is some street work going on. Asphalt, there's Bureau of Street Services doing some crosswalk work, so they've done some temporary lane closures, but that's just expected also.
And what about the paragraph, "other streets as needed," and who's going to make that decision, and how will notification be done?
All right, that, this motion would provide, delegate authority to the Director of the Bureau of Street Services, with the provision also that the impacted council office would be notified prior to what we're proposing to do. And this would be for activities associated with the convention itself.
I would urge you to tell all of us, because these weren't my constituents, but they still found my phone number in the phone book, so I could at least read to them where the streets are, what the alternatives are.
Certainly, we can do that.
It's more important to notify, obviously, the one, but I don't know why they called me, but I did get them. The only other thing that I would raise, just tangentially, is that if you didn't see the L.A. Business Journal front page of July 31st, it does raise an issue that says, "Downtown Workers Nervous About Convention," and it talks about tenants being brought into meetings and downtown business office being shown, in my opinion, that god-awful video, and being told that the best advice is boot, be out of town and close your business down. And I'm wondering if this is what we are in fact doing and why we are in fact doing it, and...
Okay, but now your time's up. We'll let them answer that, and while you're answering that, could you also answer the following question? When we have fire emergencies in fire areas and roads are closed, they're closed to everyone except residents who can show an ID and show that they live there. Do we have any similar provisions so that residents of a closed-off street will be able to get home?
Yeah, let me answer that question first. These closures here are the actual security perimeter, so to go inside here, you'll need to be credentialed to be in the convention.
Which means even if you're a resident, you can't get in?
Well, there's no residences inside this security perimeter. There's issues of access because of one-way street implementation and so forth, and that's what we need to work with people. And of course, we will make provisions for them to get into their residence or business. But inside the security perimeter, there is no residences. In terms of the meetings, I can't speak for every meeting that's gone on out there with various agencies. The meetings we've conducted, myself, my office, we've been meeting with businesses, essentially at their request, explaining the traffic perimeters, explaining the likely conditions, and encouraging them to stay open for business. Look at modifying work schedules, things that can help them in terms of traffic and so forth. And, you know, we've been honest with them about the fact that there may be large numbers of people on the street, but we're going to be deployed out there to facilitate that process, and hopefully, it'll go smoothly.
Additionally, Councilwoman, we've also put up some additional signage that says businesses open, event parking, and so we're trying to facilitate that as we speak.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, part of what's disturbing here is the motion is dealing with street closures for purposes of the convention. And the issues that arose, and I brought it to the attention of Councilmember Walters' staff yesterday, that I'd also received a call. And what happens is this whole fencing of this perimeter is a separate action from the motion. And the call I got was, for example, from a parking lot attendant right across the street from the convention center. Not a parking lot attendant, parking lot owner. And the reality is, the convention center's having a trade show, yesterday was having a trade show this weekend, and we actually put cement blocks in front of his driveway. We're starting the construction of this perimeter fence. And he was expecting it to happen the week of the convention, around the 11th of August. And if you look at the motion before you, it says we will be closing off Figueroa on the 11th of August. And what happened is, he'd been attending meetings with LAPD, and he had a clear understanding of the need of the closure. He did not understand that this perimeter fence was going to start to be constructed two weeks before the convention. And that's what this issue's about. And that kind of notification was more of the issue. Mr. Martinez has explained to me that they learned, for example, with Grand Prix, that it takes a while to construct this fence. It doesn't happen overnight. But that's a notification that wasn't given. And don't get me wrong, when you put a block wall in front of a parking lot's entrance, it's kind of a deterrent to business. And so people were asking those questions yesterday. When you put that kind of fencing in front of a car dealership, it kind of deters business. And we're saying, well, you have access to an alleyway, for example. And now we're putting signage, explaining that. I'm just trying to bring it up because it is an issue, and we didn't approach it properly. What the motion doesn't tell us, and it's not before us two weeks ago, that they had to close off these avenues because they had to build this perimeter fence, and proper notification had to be given. And so I think businesses do have a question. The other comment I want to make is, let's understand that the City of Los Angeles is open for business. We want to showcase Los Angeles on this, at this convention, and it's important that we give that message. It's not a message of gloom and doom. And that's a message that's been conveyed, and I think that there's a reason why we want Los Angeles to be showcased. But again, I think that we are impacting businesses. I appreciate the steps that we're trying to take today, but I think that we might have taken them earlier so that this kind of confusion wouldn't be arising.
Ms. Chick.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, someone shared with me an email memo, and this is from the private sector, from personnel who are in one of the high-rise buildings in close proximity to the convention center, to Staples. And the meetings that they're having and information that's being given to them by the city, by LAPD, by the Department of Transportation, which I compliment you for, with the kind of disruption and changes, it's really important that we're communicating as well as it seems we are. But here's my question and my point. What about also communicating with your own city family and beyond, other government employees who work downtown, county, state, federal? Because obviously, we have a large workforce that is coming in and out of this area. And some of the things that I'm reading in this memo, for instance, the Sixth and Ninth Street freeway off-ramps, Olympic Boulevard and Figueroa will be subject to immediate unannounced closures for motorcades, et cetera, at certain times, and then about the security perimeter and other streets. Are there going to be certain corridors, certain paths, that will be recommended and will be looked to, to remain open, if at all possible at all times, for workers downtown? Is there, for instance, going to be a toll-free temporary hotline for people to call to find out about street and freeway closures, if that's something that could help the situation? And what is the department doing in terms of, along with, I would assume, street services, to pre-mark and notice... to pre-mark and notice motorists in advance so that we don't start getting some of the bottlenecks that can be avoided if people know both exits on the freeway and a certain number of major intersections in advance, they can take an alternate route?
Let me address several of those issues, and I'll turn over to the Department of Transportation representative. Several months ago, we sent out a notice to all public agencies in the downtown area and had a major briefing at Parker Center where we explained what was going on and the upcoming convention and so forth, to get them involved. We've been working closely with our emergency operations organization within the city to ensure that all city departments are getting notification of, you know, what's going on and so forth. So that's the group, you know, we've made an effort to work with the public sector as well as the private sector. In terms of information, we have an information line established where you can get a recorded message in both English and Spanish about the closures and the streets and the convention and so forth. Also, we have a website established where you can actually view the maps and so forth, laacity.org, and then click on the DNC icon. So we've done a number of those efforts to get information out to people. In addition, DOT has done a number of efforts in terms of their online traffic, real-time information, and they're working with Caltrans. I'd like to turn it over to them so they can speak to that.
Did you give the phone number for us and the public that are watching?
While he's speaking, if I could get that out?
We have several more people. You have a couple of minutes here.
Yes, Councilwoman, the department has a media alert services that we sent out to all the medias of any of these street closures, so that's one way of notification. We use our changeable message signs that we have all around the downtown area. Along with that, we have, just Frank mentioned, we have a real-time traffic website that we have just launched, and we're going to provide you with a copy of that probably by the end of this week, which gives you, every two minutes, it updates the traffic conditions on all the traffic streets where we have the ATSA loops. And that includes downtown, includes a lot of other corridors. And additionally, we're also, again, our staff walked with flyers door to door, giving all those businesses and residences that are impacted flyers of what's upcoming closures and what type of work that is to be expected.
Okay. Do you have the phone number?
Yes, I do. Again, that's 1-888-356-4661.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a couple of questions that I think can help clarify some of the issues that have been raised, although the staff is doing a good job. Frank came in, along with Department of Transportation and others, to the ad hoc committee meeting that we had recently, and provided not only a transportation plan, but a lot of the mitigation measures that they're going to be implementing. And so for the sake of clarification and information, I want to ask just a couple of things. One is the timing of street closures, et cetera. Some people are wondering if they're too early or if they're late enough before the convention. How much of that is dictated by Secret Service concerns or at least considerations? Second, do the specific street closures and plan that we're voting on today reflect the changes possibly from the lawsuit by ACLU and some of the protests and demonstration groups? And finally, I think you've already begun to mention the outreach and public information efforts that are going on. But in addition to the, literally going door to door to hand out flyers in the impacted areas, there's other efforts going on in addition to the stationing of traffic officers at all times during street closures during the impacted time period. So if you can maybe touch on those points.
In terms of the security fencing, the security perimeter and the fencing, the construction of the fencing, the size of the fencing and so forth, was a joint decision with the United States Secret Service and the LAPD. And the issue of when streets have to close or when they're impacted really is a factor that it takes a while to construct this fence. It's not something that can go up overnight. It takes many, many days to lay the K rail and put the various fencing pieces together. In terms, and so the motion reflects the anticipated street closures reflecting from the security, the creation of the security fencing. We are also doing a number of community meetings in the Pico Union area and the South Park area. We've conducted two meetings in the Pico Union area. We have two more scheduled, one more scheduled in Pico Union and one more in South Park. And then, as we've said, a number of meetings in the business community. Some of the other part of the questions, sir?
The public information and outreach?
Right. Again, using our website, using our helpline, and again, conducting meetings, using flyers that we've been handing out in the community, and again, an effort. And then whenever we have a street closure, an actual closure that occurs, not just putting the K rail, but when we actually close the street, we'll have traffic officers there to help people detour around that area so they get through.
Part of your presentation was those officers will also check if there's residents that live within the area. They can make the decisions who to let through, who not.
But obviously, if people live in the area or have local business in the area, they need to go in. And what we're trying to do is, it's not a security check, it's a traffic facilitation check. So that if people need to get, are traveling through the area, we want to advise them upfront that it's closed ahead and they can detour around so that we avoid a backup of traffic into residential neighborhoods.
Good. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Walters is listed next, but she has asked to close, so I'm going to call first on Mr. Bernson.
First of all, we heard a lot of this in transportation this morning, and even though this isn't a transportation matter, I think that the DOT did a very good job, and I think that they've done a good job of outlining the preparation for these closures. But the one question that's still unanswered, and I don't know if there is an answer, and I expressed this in committee this morning, is what impact it's going to have on those businesses that have to rely upon customers. And I think the answer is obvious, that a lot of these people are going to be drastically inconvenienced, if not put out of business, during the period of this convention, and that's an unfortunate thing. The residents, I feel you've made adequate provisions for. You're going to give them identification so they can get in. They've been notified ahead of time in many different ways. But the businesses, the retail businesses that may be in the downtown area are going to be impacted, and I don't know what we can do to change that, to be very honest with you. It's just one of those things, and it's unfortunate, but that's the way it is, and I feel sorry for them.
Ms. Chik for the second time.
It sounded as though maybe some of the kind of information I'm looking for has been presented at the ad hoc committee, and then I would very much like it to be shared with all of the council offices, if it's something that's going to help my staff and other city workers get from home to work. We don't want to disrupt the workforce, private or public. And there's no reason to do that. And I have to say that in reading this memo, there's lots of movement of workers in the private sector who are being encouraged to stay home, to work from other locations. And that sounds as though it's doable, and it's something that will contribute to having things move well. That's not something that's going on in the public sector. We're all coming to work. So I don't see how, when I'm driving, I'm going to be able to make use of the webpage and the two-minute updates to know which streets to go on. And this isn't about me and my staff. This is about thousands of people who work downtown, and in particular, public government workers. So I guess, do you feel that the way things stand right now, that the way you're communicating to city workers, because I heard you're notifying city departments, but that's about the work the city needs to do to make things happen for the convention? That's not about helping people get to and from work in a smooth and expedient way. So my concerns have not been addressed yet. I'm still worried that with the information we have, we're just going to chance it that we're going to get caught somewhere.
As I said, we did have a major briefing for all city departments and city agencies. We're willing to do that again.
What is the briefing going to tell me, Mr. Martinez? Is the briefing going to say, "These are the best ways for people to get in and out of City Hall"?
Well, what we did in the briefing and what we would do now that we even have better information as far as the final street closures and so forth, would be to show where those are. And I think from that, we can look at...
So a briefing wouldn't be necessary? I think something in writing, a map and other information in writing to all council offices. If you've already sent it to departments, then I suppose you don't need to send it again. I'm talking about helping people get in and out of downtown.
Right. And certainly, we can put something together for you.
Councilwoman, there would be a package. We're putting a final package together, and I believe the Chair of the Transportation Committee is going to bring a package for all the council members. We're in the process of putting together maps, shows the detour areas and the flow of traffic. So yeah, that's coming, and we're hoping to have that for you by this Friday.
Mrs. Walters to close.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Councilmembers, I appreciate your concern about traffic in the area during the four days of the convention. Four days, that's all. If you recall, the two weeks of the Olympics and how things did run very smoothly during that time, I am very hopeful that that's what we'll experience here. As far as Mr. Hernandez's question about barriers, concrete barriers, going up across driveways yesterday, we checked into that because we had calls as well, and we understand that was work of the Secret Service Agency with some involvement of the Police Department. So we're trying to work with all of these agencies, as you are. And I appreciate the briefings that you have given us, and we'll look forward to the continued information that you will be sharing with us. And I've requested, as you know, of you and my office, to be certain that all the people are notified, the people in the residential areas are notified downtown. And that is still my request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item 46 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. What's next, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, item number 48 is a closed-session item. However, there is a card on the item. Do you wish to...
We also have a card on item 42, another closed-session item. Okay. And I've just... Yes, 48 is the 1070. 42 is the Baykeeper lawsuit, and we have Steve... Well, I, no, no, no. I've been advised by the city attorney that we have several that need to be dealt with that should be fairly brief. And the city attorney has requested that we do those in order to allow adequate time for the 1070 discussion, that we do the other ones first, and hope that we can do them quickly. So my suggestion is that, since we are going to go into closed session on a number of items, that we hear both of the comments on closed-session items before we go into closed session on any of them. And members of the council, the decision you will then have to make is what we do about public comment. We have two people who wish to be heard during public comment on non-agenda items. So let's start with public comment on the closed-session items. And here first, with respect to item 42, from Mr. Fleischley. This is the Baykeeper lawsuit, item 42.
Good afternoon, Madam President, and members of the council. Thank you very much for hearing us today. With me today, we have our attorney, Daniel Cooper, from Lawyers for Clean Water in San Francisco. I appreciate you taking the time. When you go into closed session today, you're going to hear a little bit about this case, which I suspect you haven't heard about for a while. It's very important. It is a very big case that many of you probably don't know about. The Baykeeper has been in litigation with the City of Los Angeles for almost two years now with regard to sewage spills and violations of the Federal Clean Water Act. We would like the city to commit to comply with the terms of the permit that they have and with the Federal Clean Water Act. Presently, city staff will admit to you that they have, on average, 470 spills a year, 250 of which reach receiving waters. Liability under the Clean Water Act is very clear. Potential penalty is upwards of $27,500 per day, per violation. We've alleged in our lawsuit over 9,000 violations of the Federal Clean Water Act. We would like to resolve this case. Unfortunately, we seem to be at an impasse with the Bureau of Sanitation. We really don't think we're that far apart when you look at what's on paper. Now, the Bureau of Sanitation will tell you today that they're very offended by our accusations. They think the system is working properly. They think that they have complete control of the system. But when they tell you that today, there's one question you should ask them. Why is it then that they're very uncomfortable committing to comply with the Clean Water Act or committing to comply with what we would call performance-based requirements, to say that they won't spill when it rains in Los Angeles? Please ask them that question, and I think you'll find some inconsistencies. They'll say that they're very confident, and yet they're not confident enough to put it in writing. And that should tip you off to the fact that maybe they're not as confident as they're saying to you. So with that in mind, that is really the big sticking point right now, is will the city commit to a performance-based standard for spills from the sewage conveyance system? Is the system designed properly? We do not want to micromanage how the city runs its system. We just want no more spills. There are other provisions of settlement, which I think we're very, very close on in terms of things like a grease trap ordinance for restaurants. Grease blockages cause a lot of the spills as well. And I think when you listen to where we are, and when you read a letter I brought, which highlights our positions, you're going to realize that we're not unreasonable people. We do have personal differences, unfortunately, at this point in time with the people in Bureau of Sanitation, and it seems like these arguments have gotten very personal. And that's why we're coming to the council to say, please, let's put those things aside. Let you be objective about where we really are and try to move forward towards an agreement here. This is going to come before the federal court again in September, and at that point, we're going to tell the judge, "We want to move forward and litigate this case to the fullest extent, start deposing people and move forward with the case," so hopefully we can resolve something before then. But I do have copies of a letter that I'd like you to take a look at.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank Member Mike Fuhr for taking the time to meet with us yesterday. And if any other council members want to meet with us, many of you have already met with us. If you want to meet again for a status update, we'd be more than happy to.
Good. Thank you. And we will get copies of the letter distributed. Okay, that closes the public hearing on item 42. And now on item 48. I have four members of the Board of the Police Protective League. Which of you would like to talk?
It's Cliff Ruff from the Police Protective League. And what we would request, that the council allow us to address them in executive session.
All right, we'll take that up in executive session. That's the only way we can do that.
Thank you.
So I mean, if there's anything you want to say now, do it, and if not, we'll just hold, hang on to the card. We'll talk about it in executive session.
Thank you. For the public record, though, the Protective League would like to request that this matter be trailed until the April election. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, that closes the public hearing on item 48. And we're now ready, I believe, to go into closed session on...
Public comment.
Oh, yeah, now that's... Members of the council, you want to do public comment now, since we're likely to be in session for a while? Hearing no objections. This will be the time for comments from members of the public on items not on today's agenda. Mr. Robinson is first.
Madam President, members, Mayor Reardon will be speaking tonight at the Republican National Convention in Philadelphia, if you have a TV, at 6:00 p.m.
And that's why he's not here in Los Angeles, helping us prepare for the other one. Renee Taylor.
Honorable councilmembers, I want to express myself in the sense that I feel that I have a reason to be here. I was born in Los Angeles. I worked for the City of Los Angeles, and I feel that we're all obligated to support the people that we are representing. Issues I want to bring up today were based on just humanity and the acknowledgement of men working together. We have voted you all in office because we know that the City of Los Angeles operates under a leadership position. This leadership starts at the top and it dwindles down to the bottom. As we prepare ourselves for a convention, I'm going to be concerned about the issues that my council representatives bring up during this time. We appreciate the facelift that you gave us in the City of Los Angeles, although we would think that we would continue to seek out the best ways to serve the community on a day-to-day basis. I think when we respect one another as community, because we are here as a diverse community, I feel that each of us demand and should have the right to have the same rights as any member of the City of Los Angeles who is a resident or non-resident. I, too, represent... I, too, represent the city in a positive manner. I think it's not an issue of race, color, creed. I think it's a matter of mentality and what we're seeking. I hope and pray that the convention is successful, and we don't run into any problems. I hope and pray that you continue to work together as leaders of the city, because as a community leader, I look upon you to operate and to see that the city of Los Angeles functions in a positive manner, like I said, on a year-to-year basis, on a day-to-day basis. I would like to say that, again, there are problems in the community, there's problems worldwide. One of my concerns, and I think this is going to come up during the convention, is a problem on AIDS, and that's a worldwide problem. I also, as a black man, have to bring up the fact that AIDS in Africa is a major situation going on right now. Thousands of people are dying each day. I feel that we, as United States, born United States African-Americans, we too have a responsibility to support other nations, whether we can get our city, our state, or our country to support nations that are hurting it. I know we have done this in the past. At the same time, AIDS can overrun Africa as a continent, I believe, in the next 25 years, if we don't take it upon ourselves to send or do something to help these people. I also mention, as a black man, and some black people, that it's a blessing to be black and live in America, because we have medical facilities to come to our systems when we do come up with different illnesses. I think it's an issue that black people should attempt to deal with, and I feel that black people in America do have enough resources to, in fact, send a coalition to Africa, to, in fact, help these people. I don't think that I should blame any race of people for not helping. I feel that if we want help, we must help ourselves. Now, that brings up the issue of being an employee, being a city resident. In other words, for me to want to help someone, I have to try and help my city. I feel that I help my city on a day-to-day basis by being a community leader. I feel that even having a job for the city is a positive light on my side. At the same time, I want to address Councilman Hernandez. I want to thank you for last year's support when we discussed union issues. At the same time, I want to state this, that the union that I was belonging to at that particular time, I have dropped out of it, based on the fact that they have not shown me that they are qualified to represent me. Now, I do pay for a union every pay period. At the same time, when I went to the union for support, they did not give me the support that I'm paying to receive. So again, I think it's an individual effort for councilmembers, for people who live and reside in the city of Los Angeles, to think positive and to support one another, that we can continue to function as a single city, as one body. I know we have 15 council districts, and the reason why we break it down into 15 districts is because it would be too much work for one individual. So I'm hoping that as you represent me, and I represent you, that we represent each other fairly and honestly on a day-to-day basis. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much. That closes the public comment period, and I believe we are now ready to go into executive session. We have, as you can see, seven items on the agenda for, I believe it, seven, for executive session. I'm advised by the city attorney, some of these will be quick. I suspect that some of them may not be so quick. But it is now time for those of you who are not part of the executive sessions to depart. And while you are doing that, and we are securing the room, we'll go ahead and clear the desk.
You have motions for posting and referral?
Without objection, those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk for closed session.
And that clears the desk, but the room isn't clear yet, and I don't see a lot of people moving toward the door. Madam City? Madam Clerk?
Next item, Madam President, item number 47, its settlement in the amount of $225,000 in the case of Guli versus City of Los Angeles.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that's approved. Next item, Mr. Fuhr for an announcement.
Yes, in my attempt to have an act of mercy here, the Budget Committee will meet at 3:00 o'clock, to give people time to have lunch.
I don't know if that's an act of mercy. All right. Mr. Padilla for an announcement.
Announcement also, ITGS Committee, which is scheduled to meet at 2, will meet at 2:45, in the same room.
All right. And you have an announcement also?
I just want to know what about housing?
What about housing?
Where's housing going to be? Mr. Jekos?
He's not here. All right, Madam Clerk, you were going to announce the continuations.
Item number 41A, it's a closed-session item, continued to August 4th, which is Friday. And item 42, which is another closed session, continued to August 11th.
All right, I guess everybody got that. Anything else?
That clears the desk.
Do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing no adjourning motions, we're adjourned. See you on Friday.